Do you speak to the commission on items not on the agenda? Is there anyone wishing to speak to the commission on something not on our agenda? Seeing no one, we'll go to the next item, which is action recap for the January 24, 2008 minutes. Were there any comments on the minutes? Seeing none, do their motion.
We approve.
And a second. We have a motion and a second by Jeffrey and Donaldson, without objection then. Next item on the agenda is the director's report. Charlie?
Yes. Fairly brief tonight. First, with regard to what the city council has done. In their last two meetings, since your last meeting, they met on February 5th and February 19th. On February 5th, the redevelopment agency extended the exclusive negotiating agreement with Wareham on the Transit Center project. And they also approved issuing a request for proposals to develop a strategic plan for the development of a cultural arts center, and that would be in the building behind us here that the city has purchased and that the commission previously had a study session about. The redevelopment agency also agreed to consider including an elevator at one or both ends of the proposed South Bayfront pedestrian bicycle bridge. That's the bridge across the railroad tracks between Novartis and Bay Street. And they would consider putting an elevator at one or both ends and to consider increasing the budget for the project if an elevator is included in the final design. And finally, on the 5th, the council appointed Gene Casey and Ann Maines to fill two of the three vacancies on the Park Avenue District Advisory Committee. On the 19th, there wasn't a whole lot of planning-related stuff on that agenda. The council did approve an amendment to the contract with MIG for their work on the general plan update. And they also approved a contract with ESA to prepare a negative declaration for the Amorus biofuel pilot plant project on 59th Street, and that will be coming to the commission at your next meeting in March. The general plan update steering committee held its monthly meeting just last Tuesday, February 26th, and they reached somewhat of a milestone by finalizing their discussions on the draft preferred plan. That plan will be presented to a joint meeting of the Planning Commission and City Council on Saturday, March 22nd, here in the council chambers, and that will begin at 9:00 a.m., scheduled to go from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And finally, I'm going to move over here to the computer because I want to show you a few pictures. I'm going to follow up on some items that you asked me about at some previous meetings, and it's easier to illustrate those with photographs. Okay, this is, you may recall this, this is the Shellmount renovation project, as it's called, the old Sherwin-Williams building at Shellmount Street and Shellmount Way, and this is the Powell Street Bridge in the background and Lazy Boy over here on the right. This is the parking lot between the two, which is part of this project. At a recent meeting, Commissioner Hoff asked about the possibility of removing the fence that's underneath the bridge here. As you may recall, as a condition of approval of this project, you required them to remove this fence that's on the north side of the sidewalk, south side of their parking lot, and also this fence over here along their west property line. I believe that one is going to be replaced with a nicer-looking fence. This fence along the south side will not be replaced. But there's another fence, parallel to this, underneath the bridge that Commissioner Hoff asked about removing. And I've discussed this with the Public Works Director, and as a matter of fact, it was already on his mind to think about removing that fence. And he would like to remove it, but before doing that, he is going to take it to the Public Works Committee for discussion, just to make sure there are no safety concerns or any other issues. Apparently, that fence has been there a long time, even predates Maurice Kaufman, who has been with the city for quite a while. As you may know, the Sheraton Four Points has parking underneath the bridge here, which is accessed from the other side. I don't know if they have any rights or concerns about that fence. They might want to weigh in. But in any event, hopefully, we can get that fence down, and then people will be able to walk from this parking lot all the way through, across, and under the bridge. So that's where we are with that. And finally, with regard to the landscaping at the East Bay Bridge Shopping Center, you may recall that at our last meeting, we gave you our quarterly update on the overall East Bay Bridge Shopping Center, and you directed us to continue to give you quarterly reports. However, you asked me to bring back tonight a discussion of the dead landscaping at the center and what they're doing about replacing it, and particularly the landscaping around the area that's to the south of the Pack and Save adjacent to the Adeline Place project. I've gone out there to the site and looked around, and frankly, I'm having a difficult time identifying just exactly which landscaping is of concern to you, and I'd like to just know that because then I can convey it to Cattellus and tell them what it is they need to fix. So I've got four pictures here. Let me walk through them with you quickly. This is the Adeline Place site here. Just for orientation purposes, this is looking from the south. San Pablo Avenue is on the right side. This is Emery Street over here on the left side. West MacArthur Boulevard on the south side. You can see the outline of the Czech Cashing Building here. I got this picture off the Internet, but it's obviously fairly recent because the Czech Cashing Building is gone, although now the Adeline Place project is under construction. There is a concrete block wall here on the west side of the Adeline Place site, which separates it from the Pack and Save site. Anything on the Adeline Place side of that wall, of course, is going to be replaced as part of the project. Here along West MacArthur, there appears to be a little bit of landscaping and a tree. And going around the site here on the Emery Street side, there is a little bit of landscaping here on the street side of the wall, and then, of course, there's landscaping along the side of the building and street trees. I did notice, in this planting area to the right of the driveway, it looks like there's about three shrubs, and one of them appears that it is probably dead. This is looking from the north. This is the inside of the parking, of the loading area. There's no landscaping on the inside of this wall. It's a walkway and just a loading area. And then this is looking from the east. So I suspect, whoops, I suspect that the landscaping that is of concern to you is probably this area right here, but I'd just like to confirm that.
When we were looking at the Adeline Project, Charlie, the wall there, you can see on the other side of the cars there. There's a strip of planting there. You can see the trees sticking up. Each, all those trees are dead.
Here?
Yeah.
Oh, well, that...
And that, when I, I asked about that when we approved that project, and I was told at the time that that strip actually belongs to...
Cattellus?
Yeah.
Even though it's on the outside of the wall?
Right, and at the time, the Adeline Project said they would work with the subsequent owner to the Cattellus project to make sure if something happened in there. Anyway, that was...
Okay, so it's this along here?
Yeah, all those trees are dead. You can see there's no leaves or anything on them.
I see. Well, I think part of the reason I had difficulty locating that in the field is that this is all a construction zone now, and it's all fenced off and got scaffolding...
And there's a big wall. It doesn't really make sense for it to be, you know, a Cattellus responsibility. I think that's probably, probably part of the reason it's all dead.
Okay, so this is the area in question, right along here?
Yeah.
All right, well, I'll follow up with Cattellus on that then.
I assume there was supposed to be some landscaping right up there, continue all the way up to 40th, where it's just dirt right now at the turn there where the crosswalk comes across the street?
Over here?
Yeah.
You mean the Emery and West MacArthur?
That whole patch there, I'm sure there was landscaping there at some point. It's all gone.
Okay. All right, so that's here.
Those are the things that I noticed a long time ago, and I don't remember looking in the parking lots themselves, but that's what really stuck out to me at the time.
This area right here mainly, and then also over here.
Yeah.
All right, Commissioner Jeffrey, I know you had concerns about this. Is that your...
Well, that, the, I had some concerns about some of the trees along 40th Street.
Oh, right, that was another part of the south.
Right. That wasn't this part.
Yeah, okay. All right, well, that concludes my director's report, unless you have any questions for me.
Any questions for Charlie? No. Thanks a lot, Charlie, for the update. We have one public hearing item tonight, and then we have two study session items. And I just wanted to let anyone here know who's interested, out in the link is a commission packet, which has all of the information that we have in front of us. You're welcome to go take a look at that if you're interested in a specific item, but we ask that you leave it there. It's for everybody to share. So we'll go to item five of the public hearing items. The first is the Krubner Prefabricated House at 5507 Bodry Street. And I think what we'll do is we'll have a presentation from staff, and then we'll hear from the applicant, and then we'll open the item to comment from the public. We'll close the public hearing, and then we'll bring it back to discussion with the commission.
Good evening, Chair Martin, members of the commission. The first project today in front of you is a unique project. It is a single-family residence, the first that I have, I have a pleasure of presenting it to you in front of you. I've been working for the last three years, and this is the first time that a single-family residential project on a vacant lot has come before you. So this lot is in the Doyle Street neighborhood of our city. That is corner of Bodry Street and 55th Street. And the site is, the project parcel is right here. And what in red is the footprint of the proposed residence. The lot is a little under 3,000 square feet, and the home size is about 2,000 square feet, not including the garage. This is sort of the first floor plan. As you can see, there is a two-car tandem garage. Bodry again, right here. And you can enter the house through an entry fronting the street. And you go into the den, and then you have kitchen dining area and the living area. Landscaping in the front, you have, the garage is entered through parking strips with landscaping between the strips. There is a little courtyard on the side. It's hardscape with planting pockets, a bench, and some other shrubbery. The rear yard also has a little bit of a patio, as well as landscaping. There is a green wall. Basically, this is kind of a straight wall up, and they've tried to soften that by having vertical greenery going up. The second floor plan, that's where all the bedrooms are. You have one bedroom in the front, and there's a deck attached to it. There's a study. And at the rear, you have the master bedroom with the master bathroom. There's also another deck fronting the master bedroom. There's also a roof deck. So if you go up, you can go up onto the roof, and this is the deck area. And you have portions of the roof, which will be green, right, right here. And they're also proposing solar panels, which would go here. These are the line elevations of the building. You can get a better idea through the renderings. This is the front, the front elevation of the house. As you can see, you can see how it fits in between the two houses. The height is 21, a little over 21 feet, and the stairwell goes up to another eight...
I'd like to interject a comment on this drawing. The high, the top element of the building there, if Maru could, you point the arrow to that. As you'll see from the side elevation, that's set way back. That's about halfway back the building. So this elevation is a bit misleading. The, the appearance from the street would really be, the roof would appear to be at that darker, that darker area.
Right here.
Yeah.
There's a railing here, too, actually. So this is the side elevation. This is the green wall that I'd mentioned. Basically, the materials for this project are going to be CMU wall on certain portions and metal siding. This is something called Parlex panel, and I've got a materials board here, which I'll send around in a minute. This is the other side of the house, and this is the rear elevation. In terms of zoning, this is in the RM, the medium-density residential zone, where a single-family house is allowed by right. In terms of density, the allowed density is 20 units per acre by right, which can be increased to 35 units per acre with a use permit. The proposal is one unit, which works out to 15 units per acre, and therefore, the project complies and does not need a use permit for the density. In terms of flow area, 0.5 is allowed, which can be increased to .75 with a use permit. The proposed is .7, and therefore requires a use permit. The neighborhood FAR ranges from, it's fairly ranged between .2 to .7, and the average is about a point, a point four. But when you see the proposed FAR, although it's on the higher end, when you see it in terms of the height and the bulk, the building is in scale and character of the neighborhood. In terms of height, the maximum allowed is 30 feet. The proposed is 21 feet, five inches, with the parapet extending another eight and a half, which is allowed by, you know, extensions till 10 feet beyond the 30-feet height limit allowed by zoning code. In terms of parking, for single-family houses, two covered parking spaces are required, and they are proposing that in tandem spaces. In terms of setback, the side is three feet and the rear is 15 feet, both of which the project complies. The front setback is determined by calculating the average setbacks of the lots adjacent to the site. And this, in this case, works out to be 18 feet. Their proposal is 11 feet, and the project therefore requires a front yard setback variance. Staff believes that the variance can be supported for the following reasons. The proposal is required to provide a two-car garage and on a 30-foot wide parcel. As a two-car side-by-side garage is not designed, it's not desired from an urban design point of view, a tandem garage takes up almost half the building envelope depth. The project parcel size and width is smaller than the average parcel on the Bodry Street, and most existing houses do not provide a two-car garage. In addition, a front setback study on Bodry Street varies between 2.5 feet to 23.5 feet, and the average setback is 11 feet, which is about, which is what the proposal is. Another way this project is unique is that this is going to be not manufactured on-site, but will be prefabricated and assembled on-site. It will come, the, the, the house, or most of the house will come in six, six modules. You see, the only thing that will be constructed on-site is the garage and the living area on the back. The rest will be like, this is one module, this is another module, the den is another module, each of the bedrooms are separate modules. The applicant is proposing to need a noise waiver. They hope to have this done in one day after, once the site work is done, to have it assembled in one day, and they want to do it on a Saturday, and therefore, they will need approval from the council. There is a condition of approval, which asks them to submit a traffic management plan during construction in order to make sure that when this, when the assembly takes place, it does not impact the neighbors adversely. So that concludes my presentation, and we are recommending approval for the project subject to the conditions of approval. I would like to direct your attention to this page that I, that you should have in front of you. It's minor changes to one of the conditions which already exist, just minor additions and deletions which came from our city attorney's office. And I'm going to pass this. If there are no questions, we'll hand it over to the applicant. You would also see, there's a letter of support that I received today, which is, also should be in front of you.
What page is the change to?
What page?
Yeah, there's not a page, there's no page number on it.
Page six of the conditions of approval.
Okay. Any questions for Maru?
Are there any offsite improvements that are, that the applicant is having to do?
It'll be the standard sidewalk gutter, and it's part of the condition of approval.
So curb and gutter and sidewalk? Or just in their frontage?
For this, that's correct.
Any other questions? Thanks, Maru. Would the applicant like to make a presentation before we open the public hearing?
Hi, my name is Seth Krubner, and I guess I'm the applicant. I won't speak very long because Maru did a very nice job laying it out, and my architect's going to come up and walk through some of the features that make this a rather unique structure. Excited to be here. This is what we've submitted, is about six months of planning on a single-family house. This is something that, for me, has been a dream for a long time to build my family residence, and finding a single-family parcel that is actually a vacant lot was not easy to do, but the fact that it was in Amoryville, which is a city I'm very excited to have my family residence in, it really worked out. And I think the character of the neighborhood and what we've proposed, I'm excited that this home is going to, going to be here. Obviously, from what you're seeing, this isn't, this isn't typical. There are some pretty big ideas and some big goals for this home. There were three things that drove me in doing my residence. One was that it would be a green residence. Two is that it would be modular and built in a factory. And three is that it would have what I would call very stunning and very high level of architecture. And I hope that what we've proposed here sort of meets all that. You know, I'll probably turn this over just to Bob Swat of Swat Architects. Bob is someone who I've admired his work for a long time, and when I found this parcel, I realized that it was two blocks from his office. So it seemed to be a very natural fit that we could have an architect who's award-winning work on a single-family residence this, this close to his office. Was also a very big fan of his work at Green City Lofts and knew that if I were going to be doing something that's modern and doing something that's green, that he was the person for the team. So I'm going to turn it over to him, unless there's any questions.
Any questions? Nope.
I'm Bob Swat, and again, your staff did an amazing job of presenting this project, which leaves me very little to do, but I do have a few slides that you haven't seen and some that you have, and I'll go through those very quickly, and I'll be brief. I'm a local architect, as Seth mentioned. My office is on Doyle Street, and you might know me from the work at Green City Lofts. But besides Green City Lofts, we do lots and lots of houses, which is a main portion of the work that we do. And we're very thrilled to be doing this house for Seth Krubner. And you've already seen this, but here's the site in context on the, on the lower right-hand side of the screen, shown in orange, and you've seen the, the plan with the building, existing building to the north, existing building to the south. And you've seen the floor plans, but this is kind of an interesting way of looking at the floor plans, and this has to do with how unique the structure will be. What you see in yellow on the bottom floor plan is site-built, and that includes the garage and the living room. What you see in blue are three modules, a kitchen module, a dining area module called MOD 2, a den module called MOD 3, which includes a bathroom as well, and the stairs part of module number one. And then going to the second floor, you see three more modules, four, five, and six, and basically, that's two bedrooms, a master bedroom, guest bedroom, and a deck area, a deck area which covers the living room space, and two green roofs, which will be planted roofs, which we'll look down on. And then the roof plan with the green roofs, and then a vegetable garden and an area for photovoltaics, as, as staff has already explained. The way this project will be built is really going to be unique. This is the early, early study model, and there's never been a late model, so I apologize, it's kind of crude, but this is how the building was designed. And what you see is the site-built element, which is the tandem garage. You see two modules, which are eight feet wide, and you see a kitchen module, and then you see site-built walls of CMU for the living room. And that's, the site-built elements will be built first, and then those three modules will arrive. And then presto, the master bedroom will arrive with its roof terrace and, and trellis above. And presto, again, two more modules, and this is the second bedroom in the front with its deck terrace overhangs and the stair itself. And then there's one more module, which may arrive as a flat pack, we're not sure yet, and that is extension of the stair tower to the roof to give us access to the roof, to the photovoltaic areas. So that's what the building, that's kind of the idea of how these modules will arrive. And when it's finished, you'll have these different views of the building, which I think you probably understand how, how this looks now. And you've seen these drawings, so I'll go through these quickly, but thank you for showing them earlier. Okay, there are lots of sustainability goals for this project. This project's going to be LEED-certified or Greenpoint-rated. It's probably going to be one of the greenest houses built in Northern California when it's finished. I'm not going to talk about all of the issues, but certainly, some of them are just very, very interesting. The modular construction takes 90% of the construction, moves it off-site, so there's very little impact on the site. There's less noise, there's less impact on the neighbors, there's less waste, there's less pollution, and, and it's just, it's very exciting for us because we've never done this, so we're, it's going to be a very exciting project in that respect. It's designed in terms of its orientation for passive solar, although we're allowing a great deal of sun to come in in the wintertime, but we protect it with overhangs in the summertime. It has high-performance glazing, deep overhangs, natural ventilation, so we reduce the need for any kind of air conditioning. And we're using solar energy for not only photovoltaics, but also for hot water, so we're using it for electricity and hot water. And then there will be a rain catchment system as well, which will take the, the water that comes onto the roof, will, will store it underground in a catchment system, which will then be used for irrigation. So it's very forward-thinking in terms of sustainability. Very quickly, the landscape plan, the, the idea around the landscape, more than anything else, is permeability. So all the pathways are either decomposed granite or wood planks with spaces between them, or stepping stones with very little area of solid paving. That's the major thrust of that. And when you take into account what we've done with the roofs, added green roofs and then a green vegetable garden on top, we've taken this tiny little site and increased the use of it, increased the greenness of it, increased the beauty of that little site by using as much of the horizontal surface as we possibly can.
Do you have a plant, plant palette yet?
Not yet. We know that we have a, we have a ground cover, we have a certain number of trees, and we know, we do know what the, what the plants will be on the roofs. You know, those will not, it will not be lawn or anything like that. And there will be vegetables, but we don't have the exact species yet.
Okay.
And as Seth mentioned, and as the staff has mentioned, this will be modular construction. And the way it works, it has been thought out, and I want you to know that, how we will get those modules to the site without disrupting anybody in the city. And on this diagram, you can see the site is shown in orange on the bottom left. On the right side, running sort of vertical, San Pablo Avenue, and running perpendicular to it is 55th. And the trucks, which come down the highway, will get off the highway, will be able to drive down San Pablo Avenue. And then, following these arrows, they will follow the green arrows past Bodry Street and back into the parking lot. Okay? They will back into the parking lot. If you look at the, the draw, the photograph on the right, you see a crane there. There will be a crane waiting for that truck. That crane will offload that module and actually set it in place. There will be an experienced set crew to set these units, and we're so excited because all these units will be set in one day. So it's pretty amazing, after that initial site work is done, that we will be able to set all those modules. I think it'll be an amazing day for, at least for everybody in my office, and you might want to come out and see it because it's going to be pretty exciting. And then finally, this, the materials of the building, you've seen these elevations, but the materials of the buildings, as staff has mentioned, a CMU in a stacked pattern. These, the Parlex panels, and there's another brand that we're looking at, which is even, I think, more beautiful. We brought a sample of it, if you'd like to see it. It's a wood and resin panel on a Bakelite, Bakelite board, essentially. It needs absolutely no maintenance, but it has a very beautiful wood finish. And then metal and glass, this is the panel, if you'd like to see it. Really, really nice material. Okay, and that concludes my presentation, and thank you very much.
Sure, thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. The photovoltaic, photovoltaic panels, will they be laid horizontal? So in profile, you won't see them rising above the roofline?
They're, they're held back from the face of the building to a distance where I don't believe you'll be able to see it at all. They will not be completely flat, but they will not be at the standard, what is it, 32, 33 degrees?
Yeah.
Because we've done this before, and we've worked with, what is it, Real Goods up in Hopland, they do so many of these roofs, and, and the, the reduction in efficiency for, for making them much, much more horizontal is absolutely minimal, even though people say, oh, they have to be 33, 34 degrees. They don't. And so they can go much flatter, and we'll get it as flat as we can so that we can't see it.
Okay, thank you.
What company are you buying the modular pieces from?
We have, we have been to three factories, and we're in negotiation right now, okay? And they, they vary in distance from Sacramento to Oroville to, one in Southern California will probably not be the manufacturer.
And with the one day, how, what's the construction timeline, you think?
I would, I would venture a guess that we might have, you know, six weeks to, six weeks to two months of getting foundations and slab... two months of getting foundations and slabbing and CMU work. One day... Oh, okay. Is this on?
Should be on.
Okay. It would be, I'm assuming it would be about six weeks or so to get the foundations in, one day to get the modules in, to button it all up and repair, you know, do any finishes where the modules come together. Might take another month to six weeks, mostly interior work.
Sure.
I have a question, kind of related to the one-day installation.
Yes.
Has there ever been a situation with any of the companies that you're working with where they have not been able to complete installation in one day?
I'm sure there have been, and that sometimes occurs when there are larger projects. I mean, the ones that I know of, when they're something like 5,000, 4,000 square feet, can take two days. But we've been told by the factories that we've interviewed that it would probably be a one-day set.
Would you mind emailing your PowerPoint presentation to me, anyway? I don't have anybody else.
I'm happy to.
I appreciate that.
Sure.
Any other questions? Thanks. With that, we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this item? Please step forward, state your name, and there's a sign-in sheet off to the right there. We'll ask that you please fill that out when you're finished. You can actually pull that down to your mouth there. Sure.
Three minutes.
Yeah.
Okay. My name is Jennifer Massey. I am the owner of the house next to Seth's at 5505 Bowdrie Street. I purchased it in August and hope to move in by the beginning of April. I'm really excited for his plan. I wouldn't wanna live on a block where all the houses look the same, and I think it's nice that it looks different from the other houses, but considering, for example, the construction that's happened at the other end of the block near Stanford Street, I think it fits really well into the neighborhood in general, even though it doesn't look anything like my house. I also like the idea that it's environmentally friendly, and even if I didn't like this design, and I very much do, I would support this project because since I'm going to be living in my house while his construction is going on, I appreciate the modular aspects since that reduces by, I don't know how much percent, the amount of time that I will be exposed to noise and dust and construction. I also would support, at any future point, the noise variance for bringing in the modules on a Saturday, because I think that's the least disruptive way to bring this house into the neighborhood. I kind of envision some, well, I'm gonna borrow Seth's phrase without his permission, but it's almost like a modern barn-raising that I sort of envision happening when the modules do hopefully come in, and a way to sort of bring the neighborhood together. So I guess in conclusion, I'm just really excited for this project, and I hope that the commission approves it. Thank you.
So are you the house on the shorter house?
The Victorian house on the corner.
Okay, you're the one on the left.
Yeah. There's a lot of work going on at my house as well, but not on quite as big a scale. But in any case, I think it's a great addition to the neighborhood, and I look forward to having Seth as a neighbor. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else? Go ahead, Josh.
I'm Alex Bertrand. I'm an architect, and my office is at 5500 Doyle Street at the corner of 55th and Doyle. I'm also a property owner. I'm also a property owner at 5532 Doyle Street, right next to the Stanford Housing Project that was just talked about. I just think that this project is just an awesome project for Emeryville. When I think of Emeryville as a city and as an entity, I think that this project is what I think about as what we can be as an impetus for housing. I think that we should be really proud of this. We should do everything we can to make it happen. I think that the variances that they're looking for, for instance, the variance for the front setback and the variance for FAR, are all because they're trying to work with the parking requirement that is asked of them, and I think that they're doing a really good job. If you think about the fact that they have to go a little bit in front with their setback, the option to that would have been to do lifts, and it would have created a much heavier and more massive building in the front. By doing it this way, the way they've opted to do it, they're creating a much lighter element at the top, which is more light-filled, it's going to create less mass for the neighborhood. I think that everything about this project in terms of orientation and sustainability is just great. So I'd just like to say that as far as we're concerned on 55, on the corner of 55th and Doyle, we're really, really proud of this. We'll be sitting out watching this thing get built. Thanks.
Thank you.
Joshua Simon. I live in the cohousing behind and nearby this project, and I also wanted to say how, I actually came for the next item on the agenda, but I'm delighted by the plans I hear, see. Particularly, I like the balconies and the way it's set up so people can look out over the neighborhood, so that there's more eyes on the street and more eyes on the neighborhood. And I think that particular feature is good, and I'm looking forward to having Seth as a neighbor.
Thanks, Josh. Can we have you sign in over here on the right?
Sure.
Anyone else wishing to speak to this item? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing discussion.
I move approval.
I'd second. I think it's a great project for so many obvious reasons, but the shortened construction time, and I'm especially keen on modular housing, so I thank the owner and using local architecture, and everything about this project is great. My friend Jen lives next door, she's completely happy about it. I have another friend that lives a little ways down, and I talked to them today, and they were almost crying about the project, so I just love the project. Great job.
I wanna say, too, that this project is really the trend I'd like to see happening more in Emeryville, not just for whenever we can have the opportunity for a single-family, but also for the larger construction projects.
I assume that motion was with the changes that Maru had to condition 3A8?
Chair Martin, if I may.
Yes.
We would just like to add an additional condition on page four. It's under page four, 3A. We would like them, on the building permit plans, we would like to add that they include the green-rated checklist for single-family houses, which is a standard thing that we do for multifamily as well.
And the applicants agreeable to that?
It's LEED certified.
With that, is that acceptable to the motion maker? Second, okay?
That's only standard for multifamily, but...
There's only one for single-family?
There is. Are we making that, are we gonna start using that as a model for all single-family?
For all, yeah. I'm not sure when that'll be next, but yeah.
Great.
All it does is it just asks them to put that information on the cover sheet of their building plans.
Sure.
It doesn't require anything other than just the information.
I guess before we do the vote, I just, I attended the community meeting, and everything I've heard about this project has been very supportive. It's great to hear that kind of support on a project, and it's exciting to see a single-family home coming into Emeryville, even in alternative fashion, which will be very interesting to see go up. So with that, unless there are any other comments?
I just wanna say that I think it's a wonderful project, and I really appreciate the level of sustainability that you went to. The only concern I had was were the neighbors gonna be concerned about privacy, because it is a pretty small lot, and I'm really happy to hear that we didn't have to go in and start mucking around with the fenestration of the building. And I also appreciate the sort of elements that you use to recall, like the clabbered, using horizontal lines, and trying to echo some of the elements of the Victorian to the south of the site. I really appreciated that. So you did a great job of combining old with new and positive and negative space. I think it's an outstanding project.
So with that, roll call?
Commissioner Baranco?
I approve.
Commissioner Cardoza?
Aye.
Commissioner Flores?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Jeffrey?
Aye.
Vice Chair Donaldson?
Aye.
Chair Martin?
Aye.
Seven ayes, the application is approved. This decision may be appealed to the city council within 15 days.
Congratulations, and please let us know when the crane is coming. I think lots of people wanna see that. So now we have two study session items. The first study session item is a paper mill project at 5780 Hollis Street. And Maru, is that your project as well? Okay. So we'll have a presentation from staff, and then we'll hear from the applicant. This technically is not a public hearing item, but if there's someone wishing to comment on it, we will listen to your comments as well. We have quite a long meeting tonight, so we're asking that your comments be limited to no more than three minutes.
This is the paper mill project, the site which is at the southeast corner of Powell and Hollis. I'd like to give, my discussion today is gonna be extremely brief. I'll give you some background. There was the first, this is the third study session on this project. The first one took place in the summer last year. There were a variety of comments by the commission as well as staff. The applicant came in with changes, and there was another second study session on October of last year. The commission was still not quite satisfied with the design. As a result, staff hired a design consultant, the origin's design network, to sort of review the project and offer design ideas. The applicant met with staff and the consultant on November 15th, and ideas were exchanged, and it was decided that a redesign project represented not only to staff before it came to the full commission, but that it would also be presented to a couple of, a few commissioners. So on December 10th, the revised project was presented to staff, and the commissioners present at that time were Baranco, Commissioner Baranco, Cardoza, and Commissioner, Chair Martin. The revised design was generally well-received. The applicant since then has been working to, basically further refining the design, and in terms of the basic program of the proposal, that remains unchanged. You still have two buildings, and the basic site plan is still the same. You have two buildings, and here's the access netway and Powell and Hollis. There'll be four-story buildings, two levels of park, two levels of parking, retail space along Hollis, live-work spaces along Powell and also along the park on here. Total number of unit count does not change, it's 169, in the last proposal it was 168. Live-work places and flex spaces remain unchanged. The bedroom count mix has changed a little bit. There's been an increase in number of one-bedrooms and slight reduction in two-bedrooms and three-bedrooms. I'm going to leave the design changes for the applicant to fully describe. They have been working even after the packet that you've received, so, and just in order for it to be more efficient, I'm gonna let them go through the various changes. In terms of permits, there'll be the same permits, a use permit for proposed users, which are residential, commercial, and live-work. Density will require use permit. The maximum allowed density with a use permit is 75, their proposal is 72 units. The maximum height is 55, and 55 feet with a conditional use permit, so the height is around 55. And they will also need a demolition permit for remove, for change in one of the significant structures on site. Just to give you a quick overview of where this project has come, the building A, this is the elevation on Powell Street that you saw during the first study session, same elevation during the second study session, and this is what it is in your packet today. The building B, the one, the brick building, this is again the Powell Street, study session one, the second one, and they have two options today in front of you. This is the rendering of the corner of Powell and Hollis during the first study session. This is what they had in the second study session, and I don't have one for you right now, I think that will be presented today by the applicant. Before I hand this over to the applicant, Charlie will talk to you a little bit about the parking along the Stanford Park that is proposed, a proposal that the council, city council, I asked staff to look into, and Charlie will just describe that.
I'd like to refer you to sheet L, L 1.0 of your plan set, which looks like this. It's the landscape plan for the overall site, and actually, I'm gonna go back to the site plan that Maru had here, because I noticed it was shown on there as well. You may recall that the existing surface parking lot, which is here in this area, which is owned by the city, includes about 41 privately-owned parking spaces right along here, that are owned by the building, the people who own the building across the street. And as part of this park, converting this parking lot into a park, we are required to keep those 41 private parking spaces, so they'll be reconfigured. The proposal is to reconfigure them so that they will be straight-in 90-degree spaces, accessed directly off of Stanford Avenue. They'll be set back about five feet from Stanford with a stripe down the side and clearly delineated as private parking. This was presented to the council at a closed session to talk about, you know, whether or not the council's willing to entertain this idea, because it will involve negotiations with the city and the property owners, and it was suggested that staff explore the possibility of relocating these 41 parking spaces to the south side of Stanford Avenue. So we will be preparing some drawings of that and showing those to the city council when they consider this project at a study session on April 1st. But we just wanted to get your, any comments that you may have on that idea.
Would that involve, then, making Stanford in that area not line up with Stanford in the...
Well, right, that's, I'm gonna talk, well, actually, let me go back to that drawing. Yeah, what that would, what that would do is it would take these 90-degree spaces, put them over here on this side, and then Stanford would have to have a jog in it to go around like this and come back at this end, or else the entire street would just have to be shifted over for the length of this block, which would offset the intersections at either end. Now, one thing I would like to point out about that, I have an aerial photograph here of the area. As it turns out, there are already existing parking spaces and driveways on the south side of Stanford. There's a driveway here, there's a passenger loading zone for Pacific Rim School here, there are already existing privately-owned parking spaces that are accessed from the street down at this end, and there are a few parking spaces on this side. So there's limited room for these 41 spaces, although we could try to squeeze in as many as we could. I'm not clear exactly what the rationale is for putting them on the south side of the street. I think it might be to simply get them closer to the building that owns them, which is this one, so that the people who park over here wouldn't have to cross the street anymore. Other than that, I'm not sure what the reasoning was behind that. But you could see here, this intersection at Doyle and this intersection at Hollis would be, have to be reconfigured to account for the realignment of Stanford Avenue through here if these spaces were put on the south side.
Charlie, would that be at a cost to the city to have that done?
Well, I don't know. We'll have to negotiate that with the developer. I mean, the developer has said he's willing to accommodate whatever the city wants in terms of the design, so...
But is this a one-way street, anyway?
Well, no, it's one-way, it's one-way here from Doyle Street East, it's one-way. This block is two ways.
Oh.
And I might point out that it's proposed that this be part of the Bicycle Boulevard, would come down from Doyle Street, from north of Powell across here, and then go down this way, and then down to Horton Street. So this is just FYI, really, and to see if you have any feedback about this concept.
Okay. You want feedback now, or you want feedback after we get the full presentation?
Whenever you like.
Well, why don't we sit on it, and we can...
You have no idea why the proposal was made?
I wasn't at the meeting where this was suggested. It was conveyed to me, and I believe, I can surmise that the reason probably was to get the spaces on the same side of the street that the building is. But other than that, I don't know what the rationale was.
Maybe out of the park? I don't know.
Perhaps to get parking away from the park also, yeah.
Yeah, then you got driving next to the park at that point, if it turned into park, and you made it a one-way road, and the jog wouldn't be... And you made it a one-way road and the jog wouldn't be.
Have you figured out how many spaces would be lost by moving it across the street?
No, we haven't. I believe the Public Works Department is working on a sketch of what, of what it would look like and how many spaces could be accommodated.
So we'll look at it then.
So that'll be resolved as part of the park design? The street layout and the park design?
It will have to be negotiated with the owners of this property. You may recall that we had a letter from them at your last study session where they said, we don't want to do anything that's harmful to our clients, but we're willing to negotiate. So.
Okay. Chair Martin, what I would also want to emphasize is that those relocated parking spaces that would, that Charlie was talking about on the south side of Stanford there would be for the use of the owner of that building. Those would not be public parking spaces.
That's right. They'd have to be, the private parcel that these spaces are on would have to be moved to the south side of the street. That's a good point. I hadn't thought of that.
Right, I think that's why Art was asking about the net loss of parking spaces for the public parking.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
So Maru, you finished your?
Yes, yes, I'm done.
Presentation and then the applicant, did the applicant? So it's the applicant's turn. We're going to hear from Kava.
Does this not work or?
It works.
You don't know how big my schnauze is. Good evening, everyone. Rick Juarez and Amir Massey from Archstone Smith, the clients and the developers of the project are also here. And this is the third time we've been in front of you for this project. And we had our smaller meeting with a group that seemed to have bore some fruit. Is that the past tense for bear? Thank you. So the two things that I wanted to mention was, one, we have the drawings that, with us that we shared with the group at the, at the meeting that we had. But, so it's in the, in our back pocket in case you would like to see how the process worked. Because this is a substantial change from what you've seen before. And there was a process that sort of took us there. And then the second thing I was going to tell you was that I'll quickly run you through the design of the project. And at the backside of it, there's a series of options that we were asked to bring back to you to, to look at and consider. So with that, I'll just jump right in and we'll get going on it. The site, it's outlined in red in the center of this image. In essence, the project is still in two buildings. And the parking area to the south of it is still going to become a park. The areas around it have fairly substantially, especially around building A, have changed. The parking is on the lower floor in a basement, lower floor of the building A. And on the ground floor of both buildings, but shielded from view in both buildings. As you can see, the, the edges of the building on, especially on Powell and Hollis, have substantially changed. And there's quite a bit more movement and sort of action on both, on both sides. For example, the, the opening that initially was only a little setback on the ground floor now goes all the way up the building and sort of makes the building read much smaller. A couple of other things that we've done also, maybe it'll be better on the second floor to explain it, is, let me see. Thanks. I can use my right hand a little easier. But what, what we've done is, is to actually connect this, this floor, on the second floor, the podium and the garden level, a little bit more comfortably with the rest of the, the building. That, that connection was always there through there. But we added this connection and this one on this side. And on this edge, we've added a set of stairs that will bring you up from the second floor to this level. So this is actually a bit of a, you know, it's a gesture towards that outdoor area that has the pool in it. In this building, we only had this opening where the corridor is. And now we've added one on this side where there's a set of stairs that will bring you up from the main lobby off of Doyle up to the podium level. But we've also added one on this side where this lobby actually now overlooks this area where the pool sits. But you, you also can see that initially, we had all of these units sort of all lined up. And now we're making a little bit of a play and making, by pulling these units in and out and making it a little bit more informal and not so sort of symmetrical and, and rigid. And in a way, not as rich as this will be. Landscape architects also here. And the, the podiums are fairly close to what we initially started with. But there's a series of large planting material and if you'd like to, we can get into those as we go along here. This is our third floor and what major change we also have done on the south side of the building is that these areas in that building and this one here, we've actually stepped down the building. And as you can see in this drawing, on the top floor, these units actually stepped down and there are trellises in front of them to connect them better with the garden on the second floor and also with the park to the south.
Kava, can you go back? Is that a, a two-bedroom or a three-bedroom in the southwest corner of building B? It's marked as a, by color as a three-bedroom.
This one?
No, in the building B.
This one? That's a three. Should be three.
Color-wise, it's marked as a three.
Right, but does it say two?
It says two-bedroom. I'm curious.
Two-bedroom. It must be Brian's doing. It, it actually looks like it should be a two.
Which, it's written as a two, but it's colored coded as a three. I'm curious. Okay.
Size-wise, it looks like a two.
Yeah, size-wise, it looks like it should be a two.
Okay, I was just curious.
The roof plan, we intentionally included, doesn't convey, convey a whole lot of information except to point out that in, you know, the, the building is sort of being presented as a fifty-five-foot-high building. But, but in essence, in very small areas, it's, it's fifty-five feet. And they actually show up in these colored areas. These are the fifty-five-foot portions of the building. And they mostly happen around the edges. Most of the buildings, both of them, are under fifty feet tall. So some portion of it does go to fifty-five, that is true, but not all of it. So this time, we decided to start with building B instead of A. There is substantially more glass in both buildings now. I'd say that there's about twice as much glass in each building. And in this one, because we couldn't quite get to the right solution, what we've done is that actually we've engaged the brick building by, just slightly, by a couple of feet overhanging these elements on, on this side and that side, over the, 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 the existing brick building. So instead of setting back from it, we're sort of engaging it and, and grabbing onto it. The same thing's happening on where these balconies are. We, just one element is going to come out and, and grab it. We also have these light monitors that are popping up above the roof line. And that was to sort of give a little variety and richness to the top of the building, not have it be so flat. And the same thing's happening on the east elevation. And in this case, because we wanted all the roof monitors to face north, these have a bit of a wedge shape and, you know, it adds a nice element to the, to the design, we feel. This is the main entry and this is one of the nicest parts of that brick building. It has a little arch over it. And what we have over it is a, is that, that open area that I mentioned on the second floor. It has a set of stairs that comes down to it. And you can actually see air and, and light through it. So it's an open area and archway into the podium on that side. The south side has kind of, kind of lightened up quite a bit. And that is by actually setting down these, these sides, by stepping them down. It happens on both sides and I mentioned the, the trellises that are there. So it sort of works with both the garden and the park. Another sort of very substantial difference is in building A, in a way, a lot more than building B. And as you can see, we did this just so that you could see the connection between the floor plan. The floor plan's drawn up there and the elevation is directly below it. So you can sort of come down and see how each element sort of fits. But one of the things that were brought up from the earlier designs was the fact that it didn't have enough movement and modulation and rhythm. And we feel like these bays that are now projecting out, which is, these, these elements are, are going to do the job. And also in plan, it, it's sort of modulated and there's quite a bit of movement and setback and so on. The ground floor is, is pretty much entirely glass. It's about thirteen feet high. And we've shown the, the doors into these spaces, the, the retail, commercial spaces, sort of lined up with an element that will get tied into these walls that you'll see a little better when I show you the, the perspective. So that was the Hollis Street site facing west. This is sort of in the same sort of family and it's facing north on Powell. But it has the same modulation setbacks and substantially more glass, as I mentioned earlier. South side is very much related to the, to building B in its sort of shape and form. It's a little longer, but it steps down and it's, it's fairly sort of modest and, and recedes quite a bit.
Could you, could you go back to that drawing and point out the staircase to the park from the podium?
Yeah, it's actually, we have it, the stair is here. And then in plan, the stairs go up to a landing here. And then there are two sets of them then that turn back and make it up to the, to the podium level. We have one drawing then in the options phase of this presentation. I'll, I'll, I'll show it again. So the perspective, which when there aren't so many lights on, come across a lot sort of striking, more striking and better, show you the, the corner treatment and how it's pretty much entirely glass now. And then these elements that I mentioned in the, in these bay, bay windows that come out are these walls that will be made out of translucent material so they can have a slight sort of glow to them. And they happen sort of, they, they're the thing that kind of modulate the building in, plus the fact that there is the setbacks and so on. This is a night shot of the, the building. And you see how the, the corner totally glows from all the light that's inside. And then these, these elements that we're very excited about, I think they could become very nice.
Sure. So I see a terrace up there on the upper left. That's, and then their lobby, those are common lobby spaces underneath that terrace?
Right, this thing has a mind of its own. Is, is somebody messing with this?
I'm not.
It's, it keeps moving on its own.
So that's private space on the right side of the entrance?
Correct.
And that's lobby space and a terrace on the left. What's in the, what's in the center core? That's just hallway? Yeah.
That's actually part of the lobby also. So as you're.
I like that, see movement in there.
Yeah, yeah, actually, you know, we had this side of it, we had a full floor. And we decided to just have that be an open air.
Kind of interesting.
Yeah, it, it takes away from the symmetry that's just a little too static, so. And, and you know, to be honest with you, we're not quite done with all the design because we were going to leave something for our next round where we come back to you. And so we, we could still potentially adjust this a little bit just because, you know, this side of it isn't really, it shouldn't really look exactly like a residential site. So we'll, we'll tweak that a little bit to make it work.
And those are French balconies with the same panel in front of the waste space?
Right, exactly. Right. So this, whatever's on here will be the thing that makes up this.
So we'll have some translucence as well?
Right, exactly.
And those are dual doors that opened up into the living space of the units on the right?
Exactly, right. These, these you mean? Yes.
With no actual balcony? It's just the face of it?
Correct, correct.
That sounds like an old phone.
Yeah, it did, didn't it?
Wow. Oh, somebody's cellphone. Oh, my God. Okay, thanks. Sorry for the interruption.
Oh, no problem. Options, we were looked at, we were asked to look at these four or five different options. Building B and how it engages the brick building, the position of the pool, the building A and the stair overlooking the park, building A colors, and building A corner of Powell and Hollis. So here we go. The model to the left is our previous iteration, design idea, which was to actually set the building back from the, from the brick building. And it seemed like the right thing to do at the moment. But somehow engaging the building on the right seems to actually integrate the two a little bit better. So that's what our proposal is, to actually do what's on the right-hand side. We also have two options for how the circulation around the pool works. And in this case, there's a walkway on the west side of the pool that comes down and through. It's a little bit wider because we've actually made this pool area go all the way and go up against the building. So there's no walkway on this side. Maybe I'll jump to the next one. But you see what happens here. There's actually another walkway on this side in this scheme. So there's one on this side and one on this side. And this is kind of, not isolated, but sort of enclosed on both sides by fencing. So those are the two options that we have.
Can we go back to the first option?
Sure.
So there's, it looks like on the east side, there's still a lobby that you would get to from the common drive area to the north of the fitness center. That's going to be gated out, right?
This one here. Yeah, the issue that comes up here is that this lobby has to have a way to have people go in and out of it without having to go through the pool. Otherwise, you know, kids, whoever's getting out of that lobby can end up in the pool area and that's not good.
And then the business center, is that in the same location for both these options?
Well, those are, you know, to be honest, we've kind of haven't spent a lot of time placing that. We were trying to see what this option will, will get us. And then, you know, as we've talked about before, we have these three spaces and basically infinite choices on community center, the business center and the fitness center could be in either one of these three spaces. And in a way, we got to revisit that and figure out what makes the most sense. You know, there, this, that, and that. So what we've drawn is obviously the fitness center in the middle, business center under building B, and community room under building A. So those are the, those are the two. Boom, boom.
The pathway between the two options on the west side does not seem that much larger and their option B looks about the same.
Yeah, it's just the, you know, that, that area against the building that's planted is the extra. And if you wanted to, we could get a few more feet. Is that correct? Scott, is it pretty tight?
Yeah. It's a little planted.
Right. You know, what, what, what we are suggesting is that this, this would be the one we choose. Because it just seems like if you're coming from Doyle and you're coming down this alley, you know, either way you go, you're gonna get to the other end. With the other one, you're gonna hit a dead end, which isn't very good.
No, it isn't.
So this one is the option of what happens in building A in the middle of it. So this area is actually blown up here to show you a larger version of it. And as I explained, there are a set of stairs that will take you up halfway to this landing. And then one set of stairs comes up this way and one set the other way. And there's actually a gate at this spot and this spot. So this is, in this scheme, shown as being open to anyone that is sort of willing to go sit on it, to enjoy the.
And what's the height between the landing and the top of the wall at the gates? I just don't want to see somebody scrambling up into the courtyard.
It's about seven and a half feet because the floor-to-floor is about fifteen.
Okay.
That'll be in the middle of it.
So the top of the wall, okay.
Right, so that's the one scheme. And the other scheme would be to do away with the, oh, yeah, yeah. To do away with the, come on. With the stair and just have a little bit of an overhang that could have a trellis over it potentially. It would be like a little observation deck that people can sit at and under. And, can you make this stop doing this? Say that again? Oh, there's a mouse, I'm driving myself insane with my finger. Sorry, didn't realize it was here. So yeah, the two schemes, one with the stair and one without.
So you have another stairway there. In the image to the left, there's an external stairway near the swimming pool.
This one?
Yeah, so what's the height? Is there an open rail there or is there gonna be a metal screen?
The whole idea was to actually let people from the podium come down the stair and get a view of what's below in the pool area and sort of make it a part of it. So you, from the podium, you would come down these steps to this landing halfway and then keep coming down to get down to the bottom and out.
I'm just thinking about security, is there a gate?
The landing is again, is about, is at seven and a half feet.
Okay.
So it won't be, it'll be taller than a fence that's normally at six feet.
Okay.
So the next few images are the color schemes that we're sort of looking at and we'd like you to consider. This one, in essence, shows the bay windows in some sort of a corrugated steel. And then, which is at the most, utmost sort of plane, closest to Hollis. Then the next plane is this one that's painted green here.
Stucco?
Pardon me?
Is that stucco?
That would be stucco, yes. And that's at that spot. And then the next one is this one, which in this case is stucco also. And we've just painted it a different color. And then the end ones are all glass at these ends. So that's one scheme. The next scheme actually takes each one of these elements and paints them a different color. So each one of these become its own sort of element. And then we have a third one that keeps the stucco as one color and takes the bays and changes the color of the bays at each sort of interval. Our, we prefer this scheme.
Simpler.
Just because the other ones are a little too lollypopping.
Cute, yeah. Is there an agreement there? I think everyone's agreeing there.
All right, well, that was easy.
I'm curious about the corrugated metal or the metal treatment. I noticed there's metal finally going up on the Pulte project at 65th and Hollis.
Yes.
And it's interesting-looking metal. Is that what you're thinking of or have you thought that far yet?
We haven't quite picked it, but what do you mean interesting? Is that good or bad?
He doesn't like it.
It looks a little, well, I need to look at it more closely.
Well, you need to let it go up. How about let it go up first?
What's that?
How about let it go up first?
Right.
It's like there's so little of it yet. I think that at the end, the texture of it, pardon me?
It's a little intimidating. There's actually texture to the metal. It's not just undulated, there's actually a texture to it, which is interesting.
Yeah, they.
It's also colored.
They.
Flesh tone.
Got the prices and they were, there were some sort of slight modifications made to what we had actually suggested.
I'm just curious if you've gotten that far.
Yeah, no, we haven't yet.
Okay.
So the last.
It's very apparent, whatever that the surface to the bay treatment will be, especially if it's metal, is gonna be very apparent. So it's important it be successful, whatever it is.
Right. So we went.
How does that, you might be getting to it with circulation, but how does that pedestrian entry work, that large pedestrian? Because that's new.
This one?
Yeah.
They've had a remnant of that in here.
Yeah, there was some.
Goes into the garage.
Yeah.
It actually, yeah, it takes you into the garage. If there are people that are parked for the commercial uses, they don't have to go all the way around the building. So that's a useful thing. At one of our drawings, we had actually shown a little drop-off area right in front of it.
Right.
And we weren't quite sure how the public works and the traffic people were gonna take that.
Is that now out? Because I see it, it's still in the plan.
We would still, we would still like to have it if possible. Because I think it just gives those spaces a little bit more viability. Especially if it was painted yellow or for loading and unloading or just quick in and out. People just would rather do that than go into a parking structure. So it'll be a really useful thing to the building and to the viability of the retail spaces.
Well, particularly if you're gonna have food service delivery and things like that.
Right, yeah, exactly, that is absolutely. So the last thing I just want, I'm gonna quickly show you is that this is one of the schemes that we had drawn for the, for the corner of the building. And this was the idea of using that translucent material sort of attached to some sort of a structure. And it kind of scared all of us.
Yeah. Like an erectus.
But since we had done it, we thought we'd bring it and share it.
Yeah.
Share the fear.
A little institutional. There you go, much simpler.
And yeah, the simplicity is this after getting tortured over it. Because you have, we have tens of schemes for this. And they used to do this so naturally and comfortably, you know, eighty years ago. You know, corners of buildings were always important, well-done and sort of without a whole lot of effort. And it's so hard to do it in a modern vocabulary, just very hard. But I think we've hit on something that works kind of well, especially at night. It should be spectacular.
Yeah, you don't have the gates or glass wall shown in the design?
Actually, yeah, the glass wall's gone. It's kind of, you guys have stumped it into the ground. It's now only comes up like an inch and a half out of the ground. It's just a light sort of trough that goes up. And the, just conveniently, the gate has, is like hidden in that dark area. So there is still a gate that happens at the landing.
At the landing, okay.
Yes.
Kava, what is the material that caps the tower element?
At this one?
On top of that?
On top here.
Yeah, what is, what material is that?
I don't know. It could be, it most likely would be metal, some sort of metal just because, you know, that's where you want the waterproofing for the roof and all of that. And it could be sort of nice and clean if it's metal. Anything else, you don't want a little tiny bit of stucco up there. That's gonna look silly. So most likely something that matched the mullions of the window is probably most likely.
So there seems to be a landing up in the clear story up there in that central.
This one?
Yeah, but that's not for, that's for the roof level?
Roof level. And that's, one of the things we're looking at is whether it makes sense for this to actually go up this entire floor or do we just take the glass up to a railing height and leave that as an outside?
Okay.
And it looks like.
So there's no physical access onto the roof to that stair system there?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, it's a lot of projection for no function.
And it looks fine from this view. We had a model made of it and it looks like really over the top, large.
Dominant, yeah.
And obviously the client would rather not have to build such a large thing in the middle there.
It is nice looking in this view.
Yeah, like a media room or something would be neat.
So I'd like to maybe leave you with our, what we call our money shot. And see how many of you we can get to say wow.
I think what we'll do, unless there are questions for Kava or any of the other applicant consultants, go and hear from the public. If there's anyone wishing to comment on this project. And I see Josh standing there.
I'm here. Which one of these is live?
You can talk to the stationer.
I'm here in a couple different hats. I'm here as a neighbor, living down the street at Doyle Street Co. Housing. And in particular, my main concern is about eyes on the street and particularly eyes on the new strip of park. I think it's very important, as the previous project had and as the project across the street has, diagonal from this project, to have balconies and particularly second and third floor ways to, for folks to be able to keep an eye on, on the neighborhood and to address the street. I'm also, I think there's a great opportunity to do what was done on elevation twenty-two, where there's stoops down to the greenway and where units actually open out directly onto the greenway so that it's a place where people can greet. I've met a number of the neighbors there just walking down the greenway because their front door is right there. And it's a place to hang out and it's essentially their front yard. And it makes the space more owned and more, quite frankly, safer feeling space.
So are you talking about the park side?
The park side, exactly. And then my third point is putting on my school board president hat, the concern about having units that families in Emeryville, who work in Emeryville, can afford to live in. There's a great opportunity with a rental project to be able to have housing that the retail workers and the hotel workers and many of the other people who work in Emeryville can both afford to rent and walk to school and walk to work and to have a greener city and to be able to utilize our greenways. So I wanted to encourage the committee to consider restoring some of the three-bedroom units and in particular, putting those three-bedroom units so that they address the street and address the park. I think there's an enormous opportunity for any project on the greenway to have three-bedroom units where kids can run directly out to the greenway and to have that connection. One of our dilemmas with the three bedrooms that have been built is that many of them are rented at prices that people who work in the retail and attend our schools can't afford. And if we build more affordable rental three bedrooms, I think that they will be quickly snapped up. And I think it's a great opportunity for this development to make a greener, more livable city where people need to commute less and put less traffic on the street. Thank you.
Thanks, Josh. Anyone else wishing to speak? Josh, did you sign in earlier? Okay, thanks.
Excuse me, Ron Silverman. I have owned the building at fifty-five fifteen Doyle and the one on fifty-five twenty-one Stamford. So I think this is a beautiful project in terms of the scale and the setbacks. And I didn't see all the renditions of the first two studies. I saw, I think, the second study session. And it seems to complement a lot of the other buildings around in terms of setback and interest. But I do have some questions about the circulation and in terms of the exiting and entering. And most particularly, the intersection of Doyle and Powell Street, which is a pretty hard intersection, excuse me, when you are on Doyle Street and you're heading north, if you want to cross the street or make a left-hand turn onto Powell, it's not that easy an intersection to get across. So I wanted to find out what kind of, I don't want to ask for a study, but what kind of feedback you might have or if the applicant has any information on the traffic getting in and out. And I know that there's a definite balance between residential times of leaving and coming home and the commercial traffic. Excuse me, and it's pretty apparent at the elevation twenty-one project that it's actually pretty quiet there during the day. There's not a lot of people coming and going. But I'm not sure how it would work and whether it's been discussed at any of your sessions. Thank you.
We haven't actually looked at traffic yet, but when we get to that point, I'm sure it will be addressed as part of the environmental document.
That is correct.
And wouldn't you need to, before giving the applicant a go-ahead, wouldn't you need to study the driveway locations?
Yeah, those would all be evaluated as part of the traffic assessment.
Okay.
Site distance and functioning and queuing.
Looks like it's a lot of write-ins and write-outs.
Any other persons wishing to comment on this? Well, let's take it back to the commission then. Maybe we'll just start, let's go through the options that were presented to us. It sounded like we had sort of agreement on, thanks, Kava.
And color.
Agreement on the color for treatment of building A. Building B, engaging the brick where they had the sort of projections. I thought that, the option that included the projections rather than the setback was great.
Yes.
I like that better as well.
It was actually, I was down there looking at the modular project and the backside of one of those developments that must be on, I guess Doyle Street, that is, has the same sort of situation where there was a brick facade and then there's some metal siding that comes straight up. And I noticed it right away, I was gonna take a picture. But if you're back down there, take a look, it's similar. It's on Doyle, but it's the backside, so it would be right behind the modular house lot.
Oh, okay.
You'd see it right there.
Okay.
But yeah, I agree, that would look a lot, this looks a lot nicer than stepping it back like that project in, in the north part of town. That always escapes me. What's the name of that one, where they reuse the facade and change the bricks?
City limit?
City limits, yeah.
They made some mistakes with the bricks, yeah.
They did.
Okay, back to those options, Kava. Can you find those op, you had a list of options that you.
Oh, yes.
Okay. Pool position? I think it's great. I think your solution of having a pathway on both sides of the pool so nobody gets trapped trying to get to the lobby is really important. I didn't see much benefit with this, yeah, first option in terms of the width of that pathway on the west side. It looks about the same. But I wouldn't want somebody to get trapped up there in the upper right corner where they come down off of Powell and they face a gate when they get to the lobby and are stuck there at night, have to turn around.
I would sort of rather see the lobby moved forward towards Powell Street because I think that having two fairly narrow paths and isolating the pool and the recreation center is awkward. And I think it's a nice feature to have the pool and rec area associated with the building. It's a more open feeling if you have glass on the ground floor rather than having a pathway and a fence in either direction. And I think that you could address that question of having a dead end by the building just by doing some shuffling around of those functions at the lobby.
With the electrical room?
Or with the fitness center? Which were you referring to?
So you're saying switch the lobby and the electrical room or something?
Or to play with that a little bit so that there isn't a dead-end alley on the east side. But I, I think it feels a lot more open and connected to have the pool and the recreation area attached to one of the buildings.
Yeah. Is that sheet A three point one that shows the two options with showing both buildings? Is that that? Is that right? Where it's detached and attached, thank you.
Oh.
Is that?
From the, from elevation, yeah. Well, how does the rest of the commission feel on that?
Can you walk through, if I don't live there? Can I, can I walk through from the park?
That's the idea, right?
That's the idea, right, on one side?
You'd be able to walk on the west.
On the west side.
The other option, you'd be able to walk on both sides to get from Powell. Option, you'd be able to walk on both sides to get from Powell down to the park.
So I agree with Gail. That having it attached and having that one.
And otherwise, the business center or if, you know, whatever ends up there that's a common room of some sort is going to be looking out at a fence. And on the other side, you're going to be looking out at a fence.
Yeah, but the fence isn't a, a high fence, is it?
For a swimming pool, it's six feet.
Oh, it is. But it can be open design. Well, you know, I understand your point, Gail. I felt, you know, if it, if there was an interaction in the use, I think that would make sense, but I just, I question whether you're going to be allowed to, to not end up having either a wall of glass or separation with the, with the doors locked because otherwise you're inviting pool supervision for kids that might otherwise be going into the business center or a community room. You can't have unattended kids going into the pool area. And the only way to really contain that is to have it fenced and secure somehow. You need to have adult supervision for any kids going in there. And without that, if it's all open as you're suggesting, that means you've got to have adult supervision in whatever uses are companion to the pool or it's got to be locked and separated somehow, which doesn't really give you what you want, which is interaction between those two spaces. You can't have kids going into the lobby then or into the business center unsupervised if you're going to have that access directly into the pool.
Right, but if it was the community room where you had, you know.
Then kids can't go into the community room unsupervised. Do you know my point?
Yeah, I can, I understand your point.
I, I agree with the idea, but I think in execution, it's going to be a glass wall and locked door separating the two uses. And you really won't get that synergy that you're suggesting because of the risk to kids. So.
What was Angela Buzzin Art's feeling on it? Because you three went there.
I agree with Gail. It'd be nicer if it didn't have to be there, but in effect, they're separate uses and I, I think we need the two paths and railing myself.
Or Art and?
I agree.
Two paths.
Two paths, I agree.
Two paths.
Building air stair overlook, building A stair overlook, I'm not sure. Oh, I, I think the idea of a stairway down to the park is a good one. And I think it sounds like with a seven foot between the landing and top of rail, you're going to address your security issues there. It may end up that the gate has to come down to the, closer to the park if it becomes a transient problem in the future.
It will be a transient.
But you've designed it where the gate's sort of hidden and it seems to work to me. And it's an invitation for anybody living there to go directly, whether they have kids or something else, they can run from the podium down into the park.
It's, it partially addresses Joshua's comment, yeah, I know, but it partially addresses Joshua's comment about, you know, stairs going down and connecting to the park. I mean, it's not a great solution, but.
I, I think it adds, you know, it's one more connection there.
I agree. It adds, aesthetically, it's nice. It doesn't, there won't be a lot of people walking down there. But you find that in a lot of buildings, but it does break up the articulation there and it, it adds a place to hang out in the park. It might be a transient problem, but what isn't?
There's a gate there, isn't there?
All the way at the top and the left and right, so you can't see it.
But I think there's a, even.
It should be just well lit and.
If it becomes a problem, I think there's a way to even gate the bottom without having the design look compromised. So I think, I think the stairway option is preferable.
And with proper lighting, I mean, you know, not intrusive, but just lighting to, you know, discourage people from hanging there. Yeah.
Will people be able to get, will visitors be able to get buzzed in there or is that just resident access?
I like.
Yeah, there's no reason why.
Yeah, it could be residential. I mean, visitor access too, that might activate it a little more.
Yeah, I like, I like the connection too. What's the, what's to the right of it? What's the screen? What's the purpose of the screen? What is it?
That actually is into a, yeah, into the garage. It's really the only spot where there's.
A screen left.
A screen left. Everything else is occupied.
Yeah, you used to have a lot more screening there, but you've got uses there now, which is great.
You can put plants up it, can't you?
Yeah, there's plants. That's the idea. We'll push it in some, yeah.
Anyone against the stairway? Okay, good, we're agreeing on that one.
The stairway and the overlook.
Uh, building A color, I think we already agreed to that.
Did you go through that again?
Oh.
Go through the colors?
Yeah. That was what we agreed to.
Which was the basic.
Green with the metal.
So Kava, point out what the materials are.
Yeah, I definitely agree that whatever that metal.
Color with the three bays, different colors?
Yeah, let me just quickly go through it so you're reminded. That's the second. And that's the third.
The first one. So we agreed to the first one.
And I, I, yeah, I definitely agree that whatever the material is on that forward face has to be some, something that doesn't look cheesy.
Yeah.
I like the third one, but I'm a minority.
Well, this option, Art has two stucco colors and then the bays would be a metal surface.
But all the bays would be the same color. Wasn't there one option where the bays would be different?
Yeah, well, that's the one.
That's the one I like.
Oh, that's when you liked it.
Okay. And what was the third option?
The third option was three big blocks.
Okay, so we have two that prefer the colored bay.
Actually, the stucco that's behind the bays match the color of the bays. See, in this case, the color behind the bays are different. In this case, they're the same.
So with the colored bay option, are we talking colored metal or are you no longer going to do the metal treatment? You're talking colored metal.
Correct.
Is this the one you liked, Buzz?
Colored metal.
Is this the one you liked or the, the other one?
Art, you realize that's colored metal?
Yeah.
You prefer the colored metal.
Well, what do you mean?
You prefer colored metal.
What is?
The overall appearance.
What's the option that's not colored metal?
Well, it would be the gray metal look.
Oh, oh, just the, the natural look of the metal.
Metal.
Which would look lovely at night with all the illuminated windows.
It'll sparkle.
I like them all together.
So you're saying that the stucco would be one color and all the bays would be the natural gray metal?
In this option?
I'll go with that.
In this option, there are two stucco bay, Art, there are two stucco colors. There's the recess darker color, then there's a green in front of that and then at the very. Overall, this extension is the metal bay.
Okay, all right, that sounds all right.
Okay, Buzz, you're on the minority there. Okay. Was there one other point?
I think we covered them all.
So I think there was a point about the.
What about the corner?
The corner.
Corner Hollis. Hollis and Powell.
We didn't ooh and ah, no.
Oh, we don't want the prison.
No, we want this.
And this one, you're going to revisit the height of that central tower?
Yes, yeah, we'll have two choices for you if you'd like to see it.
Yeah.
For the next one.
That'd be great.
Okay.
This is just.
Much improved.
This is just decorative and it.
It'd be open. It would be open.
It's glass. It's a glass tower.
It's a tower.
Two-story tower in effect?
Right now, but they're talking about dropping the height.
Actually, three.
Was there still to be some kind of?
Because for example, in a Hollis elevation, it's going to look much more.
Fountain or, we were talking a fountain or a piece of art?
Up in the plaza area.
Right there, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, right, right here, there will be.
A light sculpture.
A light sculpture, yes. Give me a light sculpture if you like.
How'd you know?
So can we go back to the overall plan? Like a footprint plan? One of the comments we had tonight was the three-bedroom and there's been a reduction in three bedrooms and I think that's a mistake. I'd like to make sure we get some more three bedrooms. The maps aren't even clear. I'm not even sure. It looks like maybe you have five three bedrooms?
Yeah, I wonder if those are lofted and that's why they kept calling them three. I couldn't tell either. Because there's two that say they're two-bedroom, but they're, they're actually.
Three here.
They're colored three-bedroom.
Right, they're three here and I think there are two others on other levels.
There are that one and that one.
Maybe seven at one iteration. I just, I think with something this large and we've actually got an increase in the total number of units from what we last saw, I'd like to see more, you know, three bedrooms accommodated somehow in this without breaking up the circulation. You've done great work on the circulation. It's great to see that most of the three bedrooms are positioned on the south edge near the park or in relation to the podium where you've got access for kids. But you've gone up in your unit count and it'd be nice to have some of those extra units consolidated into something that's got at least a couple more, if not a few more three bedrooms.
A hundred sixty-nine units is five three bedrooms.
I would agree with that. We're trying to be more family-friendly.
Right, and I think that was one of the things we asked for.
Yep.
And then the live-work spaces, we have the five, which I agree, the ground floor in that building, those should be live-work units. And then we have those flex spaces, which I guess could also be constituted as live-work in the N.
Yeah.
So that's seven, that's all at ground level, that's good.
Overall, the ground activation is, is great. I think the, you know, the, the added glass you've got in the design, I think overall, I'm much happier with what you've presented here. It looks much stronger. Everything about it looks stronger. And I'm still like to see a better podium design for what's going on. The space is so broken up into all these small little. I don't know, it's just, it's nothing that a kid could go out and play in if they wanted some supervised play space. It just, the whole thing seems, and there's no fountain out there or some feature for people to go and sit around.
Have you been to Broadway Grand yet? Anybody over there on the? Similar situation where there's a lot of these half-walls and, and it's common space, but you never get a sense that you could do anything in it. And I, I agree, there's just, it's, there's too much going on. It's too busy. There's no place to play or hang out.
Or even gather.
Or even gather, right. There's no real defined gathering space.
Those circular spaces are to be gathering spaces and those lines that go through it are actually trellises that are a little higher. They're not actual walls, if I recall. So, and that, that circular space is probably a fifty-foot diameter space. It's not a small thing. This, the dimension of the, between the two buildings is about seventy feet. It's fairly large. I mean, we could, we could take.
Wouldn't there be vertical posts though, holding up the?
Yeah, there'll be something, right.
Running in, I mean, instead of having a little place for some little kid to run.
Or maybe allow, you know, one of those circle areas. It's more kid-friendly.
Just open.
Okay.
Even some, sort of a natural landscape with some boulders or something.
We might just not be able to see it too, you know, a, a closer up articulation of it or a cross-section that shows just how open it is. It is a wide space.
Well, next time Scott will make a presentation on the landscaping and will take to heart what you're saying and adjust things so that it works.
To have it feel more usable and for the one in building B to have a little bit more of a focal element.
Yeah, that one seems like just a walkthrough kind of.
Go overlook the park. Right.
I'm also, I'm a little concerned about the servicing of the buildings on Hollis. I don't see where the service area is going to be for a restaurant or I don't see anything in the garage or.
For trash disposal and?
Well, for deliveries, for any kind of delivery service loading. I mean, certainly having a pull-in in front gives you something, but that seems like the only option for accessing businesses for deliveries.
We actually set back these spaces, this hatched area is a way to actually allow some, you know, access to the back of these spaces so that when you're in the parking structure itself, you can get to the back of these easily, which is something that's not done often enough. I mean, you have to go all the way around. So you have a point. We'll, we'll have a way to have something that makes sense and is logical for next time.
There's a third turning lane at the corner.
I get, you know, I realize we don't have a park design yet, but my impression right now for what you've laid out here is just too much cement and structure. I'm not sure.
In this park?
Yeah.
Are we talking about the same park?
Especially on the west edge, it's just all this paved plaza that.
Right. So can I, can I tell you the idea and then if you don't like it? The idea was to allow for the food service or the restaurant that's hopefully going to be in that corner to be able to come out and use that area.
That's great.
For seating. And if it's just grass or something sort of not so easily sort of used.
Sure.
It felt like.
I, I agree. Some of it would be good, but I think you, you look, I don't, I don't have a scale on here, but I think it's a hundred, two-hundred feet in distance along that whole edge there.
The loading. Loading and unloading, that sort of comes out in the traffic plan too, Maroon, time? Uses and.
They will need to propose one and then that'll be reviewed at that time.
But I, I think my understanding is that the park design eventually is going to go out to the community and everyone will have buy-in to that. Is that not correct? Isn't that?
That was, yeah, that was your direction before.
Right. It would be nice to start that process if you're getting, it sounds to me that you're getting closer to concurrence with the commission. So it would be nice to get that process started so all of this can come together and you can build the park the same time you're doing the project.
I would suggest that we hold off on that until after the April first city council study session. We still need to get their concurrence on, well, the design ideas plus also the parking layout.
Right. Oh, for the relocated spaces?
Avenue.
Okay.
So, that actually, if you don't mind, before you end this discussion, I'd appreciate if you have any comments on that idea.
On the relocation?
On the notion of relocating the parking on Stanford Avenue to the south side.
I think it's just a challenge. I mean, to relocate those stalls to the south side of Stanford just seems. Not, I mean, we're losing on-street stalls off of the, on the south side of Stanford. And I, I, I haven't been presented with a benefit. So maybe when we actually see a physical plan for some options, it would be evident. But right now, it just sounds like it's going to complicate the orientation of Stanford and fitting parking stalls.
It doesn't make sense.
Doesn't seem to solve the problem.
Jogging the road does.
Net benefit.
You know, and if it, it's going to become a park and used, jogging the road certainly helps with slowing the traffic down and everything. I just don't see how the parking spaces will fit on the other side and still make.
Sense.
It makes sense, yeah, but sometimes there's, those urban designers are genius and they come back with these genius plans.
If you relocate the parking to the opposite side, then you don't have any, you have actual traffic movement closer to the park or right.
Vehicles.
Next to the park.
Right, right.
Unless you put parallel parking on the north side.
Or maybe somehow extended the one-way treatment of Stanford so that Stanford becomes one-way
I agree with that.
To the west of Doyle.
I think it should be one-way.
And then you get some extra opportunity there?
Well, there's a bit of a problem with that because if it's to be a bicycle boulevard, you need to provide two-way access for bicycles.
Is that possible to have a designated bike lane within the right-of-way?
You could have a contra-flow bike lane, but then that would make it problematic to have parking
Crossing over the.
Crossing over the contra-flow bike lane.
True.
Well, it just seems like there's maybe some options that need to be looked at more closely. I don't, I'm not hearing from anybody that they see it as a strong benefit unless there's some great solution.
That we're all missing, yeah.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful.
So are there any other comments on the, the project?
Well, there's the variance for the FAR and the, you know, for the density. Nobody's really talked about that.
Well, I think the trade-off is we need more three-bedroom units.
More units, yeah, larger, a few more larger units.
Which they'll come up with.
They're not asking for any variance to the FAR.
Oh, no.
They're asking for.
Just the dense.
A use permit for the density.
Use permit for density.
As far as we know, at this point, there are no variances involved. Is that right?
There are no what?
No variances, just use permits.
Well, I would just say that you've really come a long ways on this and it's much more open, much better access. The way you've articulated the, the facades, I think is, is such an improvement. It just makes a lot more sense to me than some of the earlier versions did. And I really appreciate the, the more, more glass, the more open, the use of light. It's an important corner, as you've heard from us two other times, and I.
I think this does a much better job of sitting well at that corner.
Ditto.
Yeah, we appreciate your perseverance.
Much better. Okay, with that, uh, do we wanna take a five-minute break?
Yeah.
For folks? Okay, so we will reconvene at um eight-thirty. Thanks. What about the project on the other side of MacArthur? Do you have any rumors of that going ahead?
No, I think it's gonna sell.
German architect.
You don't think he's gonna build that?
Ready?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I men, I mentioned it to him. I just said, we were thinking-
The voice of Diane Witherspoon on the Jazz Oasis at FM ninety-one, KCSM. That's music from the date called "L.A. After Dark." Diane Witherspoon with a few special guests. We heard one of those guests, Herman Riley, featured on saxophone. That's a song, uh, the music itself was-
Meeting at eight-thirty, and what um we're going to have now is a review of the Big Four Traffic Study, and I think Charlie, you have a PowerPoint presentation you're gonna make.
I do. Is that too dark? I know the cushion-
The audience is sleeping.
Okay, this is a review of the major development projects' traffic study. Um, in your packets this week, you had a, a short cover memo from me, as well as a copy of the Nelson Nygaard report that was recently issued. In addition to those things that were in your packet, you should also have on the dies in front of you several things. One is a copy of this PowerPoint presentation, so you can follow along if you wish to. Uh, note that each of the pages is numbered, and those correspond to the numbers of the slides. So, if you, um, they're not numbered on the PowerPoint itself, but if you wanna go back to any slide, you can just reference the number, and I can go back to that slide. Secondly, there is a memorandum from Farr and Piers dated October twentieth, two thousand seven, uh, which I make a brief mention of in the presentation, and that is Farr and Piers' assessment of the impacts on pedestrians and bicycles of their proposed roadway changes. Uh, you've actually already seen this, although you, you may not realize it. This was Appendix B of the final EIR for the Marketplace Project, which was recently certified by the city council. And speaking of the Marketplace Project, you also have um a letter from Denise Pinkston of TMG commenting on the Nelson Nygaard report. And that just came in this afternoon, so I have to confess, I haven't had a chance to digest it myself. Um, this presentation was prepared in consultation both with city staff and with the three consultants, Nelson Nygaard, Farr and Piers, and Kim Lee Horn. They've all seen it, reviewed it, commented on it, and they are all here tonight in the audience and are available to answer any questions you may have. Uh, just a warning ahead of time, this is about forty-five minutes, so, just so you know. It's, it's somewhat lengthy presentation, I'll get through it as quickly as I can, but there's a lot of material to cover.
Yep.
So, the, the four major development projects, as I'm sure you remember, are Marketplace, Site B, Transit Center, and the Gateway Project. An overview of what I'm going to be talking about. First, a, a brief background, just so we all remember how we got to where we are today, uh, and we'll all be on the same page. Secondly, I'll do a summary of the Nelson Nygaard Report, their review of the Farr and Piers and Kim Lee Horn recommendations. Then, staff will have some conclusions from both the Nelson Nygaard work and the previous work of Farr and Piers and Kim Lee Horn. And finally, we'll make some recommendations for you of how to proceed with traffic and transportation issues facing Emeryville. Uh, let me also just mention, as I said in the cover memo, that the same presentation is going to be made to the city council at a study session on March eighteenth, so any comments you have tonight will certainly be conveyed to the council. So, the background. Uh, in November two thousand five, the council considered a proposal for the Gateway Project at Powell and Christie, and several council members expressed concern about the traffic impacts from both that project and other major development projects in the area that were uh being proposed. So, they directed us to prepare a cumulative traffic study of all of those projects, and in October two thousand six, the council authorized us to hire Farr and Piers and Kim Lee Horn to conduct that study. The key question for that study was whether those proposed major development projects were going to cause gridlock on tra, on city streets. And I'd like you to remember this question, because we're gonna come back to it later. On March seventh, two thousand six, concurrently with that, uh, council member Fricki presented his transportation blueprint for Emery, for a new Emeryville to a special study session of the city council, and that included ideas for improving bicycle, pedestrian, and public transit environments. In response to council member Fricki's idea, the council directed that an alternative transportation study be conducted, and Nelson Nygaard was hired to conduct that alternative transportation study. Meanwhile, Farr and Piers and Kim Lee Horn, um, conducted their traffic study, and that was presented to you at a study session on June twenty-eighth last year and to the city council on September sixteenth. Both the commission and the council expressed concerns about the effects that the recommended roadway changes would have on pedestrians, cyclists, and public transit. It was noted at the time that Nelson Nygaard's alternative transportation study was going to address these issues. However, uh, both the commission and the council said that you wanted that information sooner rather than later, so we were directed to amend Nelson Nygaard's contract to explicitly include a review of the Farr and Piers and Kim Lee Horn recommendations and what their effects on pedestrian, bicycles, and transit would be. A first draft of that report was received by staff on December fourth, and a revised report, which responded to the comments that staff had on the first draft, was received on February fourth, just a few weeks ago, and that is the report that is being presented to you tonight, and the, that is in your packets. So, now to summarize the, um, what was in the Nelson Nygaard Report. First, an overview of what's in that report. Uh, there is a summary of the Farr and Piers and Kim Lee Horn study, uh, in, and in this case, they have updated the numbers for the Marketplace Project, which you may recall has been, has changed substantially since the original traffic study was done. So, this study is up to date, and Farr and Piers has rerun all the numbers, so hopefully everything is current now. Um, next, the Nelson Nygaard Report, uh, includes revised trip generation rates using what's called the Urbemis computer model based on transportation demand management measures, and I'll explain what all that means in a second. Then there's a summary of the Farr and Piers and Kim Lee Horn recommended roadway changes. Uh, there is also revised level of service and vehicle queue analysis that was done by Farr and Piers in consultation with Nelson Nygaard for this report, using both the updated numbers for the Marketplace Project and also these revised trip gen, Urbemis trip generation rates. Uh, then there's an evaluation of the effects of the proposed roadway changes on pedestrians, bicycles, and public transit. And finally, Nelson Nygaard concludes with strategies for change for sustainable transportation in Emeryville. So, to start with the summary of the previous Farr and Piers, Kim Lee Horn study, uh, these are the four major development projects, and just for orientation, uh, this is Powell Street, running across the middle. This is the railroad track here, the freeway here, uh, Shellmount Street is along here, Christie Avenue here. The four projects are the Marketplace Project up here, the Gateway Project here at Powell and Christie, the Site B, uh, Bay Street Project over here, just below Powell, between Shellmount and the railroad, and the Transit Center Project, uh, on the parking lot site just north of the Amtrak Station. We've also shown the Chiron, now Novartis, um, planned unit development site, which was also included in the study because, um, it hasn't been built out yet, but it's entitled for a substantial amount of future development, and that would generate significant traffic in the future, so we wanted to factor that into the study and see what effect that had. These are the development assumptions that were made in the Nelson Nygaard Report. As you can see, the figures for the Marketplace reflect the currently proposed so-called reduced main street alternative. I would note that the figures for the other projects have also been adjusted slightly to reflect their current status. Uh, the Transit Center, for example, is now a hundred and sixty thousand square feet. I think it was a little bit larger previously, and then these others have also been tweaked a little bit. The numbers for the Novartis-Chiron, uh, project have not changed. There were two scenarios for that. One is limited build-out with just one new building, and the other was full build-out, where they would build out to everything they're entitled to under their PUD. You may recall that the original study included four scenarios, uh, with various combinations of the major development projects and the Chiron, either full or limited build-out. Uh, they all included existing traffic and exist, and future projects in Emeryville and outside Emeryville. And the previous study really focused on the scenario three, which was referred to as the worst-case scenario, because it included both the full Chiron, Novartis build-out, and all four of the major development projects. The Nelson Nygaard Study also focuses on scenario three, because it would generate the most traffic. These are the thirty-seven intersections that were analyzed by Farr and Piers for level of service, and uh, there's a blow-up of this area here, which is over here. This is the vicinity of the four major development projects, Powell and Shellmount-Christie area. Farr and Piers concluded, uh, in their original study, that eleven of those thirty-seven intersections would be impacted by the projects or by future traffic in general. Uh, these eleven intersections would be expected to operate at level of service E or F in the year twenty-thirty, and they're listed over here on the right side of this slide. In addition, the original study included, uh, analysis of some so-called out-of-the-box concepts, and that was done by Kim Lee Horn. There were seven such concepts that were looked at. They included, uh, creating a one-way loop on Shellmount Street and Christie Avenue north of Powell, moving Shellmount Way a few hundred feet to the north, reconfiguring, uh, the lanes on Powell Street and Christie Avenue, adding a crosswalk on the north leg of the Powell-Christie intersection, and creating a pedestrian scramble signal phase at that intersection, having pedestrian bridges over the streets in the Shellmount-Christie loop area, uh, so-called pedestrian recall phase for the signals in the Shellmount-Christie loop area. That's where the pedestrian gets the green light or the little white walking light without having to push the button. And finally, reconfiguring the Powell Street Bridge to reduce it from four lanes to three and use the extra space for a sidewalk and a bike path on the south side. So, that was what was included in the original, uh, traffic study by Farr and Piers and Kim Lee Horn. Now, concerning the trip generation rates, um, traffic studies always begin with trip generation rates. You have to figure out how many trips are going to be coming from each of the various land uses, and these are based on the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual, or ITE, which is a big fat book that has lots of charts in it for all kinds of different land uses at all times of the day and week. These so-called ITE rates are based on studies of existing projects all over the country, but most of those studies, the vast majority of those studies, for some reason, are done mainly in suburban areas where most people drive alone and there's ample free parking. So, obviously, rates based on those kinds of conditions are quite high. So, trip generation rates from those studies are referred to as base ITE. Farr and Piers adjusts these rates in all of their traffic studies to account for the situation in Emeryville, to account for our transit use, and so what are referred to as drive-by and diverted trips, that refers to if you say stop at the store on your way home from work, that would count as only one trip, not two. Diverted would be if you had to go out of your way to get to the store and you therefore use a different street and impact different intersections. They also account for the mix of uses that are in the area, which tends to reduce trips, because you can live close to where you work, or you can walk from your office to the store, whatever. So, Farr and Piers does all those adjustments to their rates, and those adjusted rates are referred to as the final ITE rates. Nelson Nygaard, uh, takes a slightly different approach in this study. They've used a computer model known as Urbemis, and that, uh, I think it's a contraction of urban emissions. It's actually an air quality mon, uh, modeling, uh, computer model. And that model makes adjustments to the I, ITE rates similar to the Farr and Piers' adjustments, but it also includes transportation demand management strategies such as, uh, parking policies, unbundled parking, parking pricing, uh, preferential car and van pool parking, mixes of uses on the site and in the vicinity, and, and that is also included in the Farr and Piers' adjustments. The housing type, because, uh, high-density urban housing tends to generate fewer trips than, uh, suburban low-density housing. Support programs such as telecommuting, ride matching, and guaranteed ride home, and finally bicycle and pedestrian facilities on-site. So, what the Urbemis model does is it says, what if you were to implement all of these TDM measures in all these, um, major development projects? How would that affect the trip generation rates? Uh, I have two charts here that summarize the findings, and you won't find these charts in the, in the Nelson Nygaard Report, but there is a table with the same numbers, and all I did was take the numbers in the table and convert it into a bar chart, so it'd be a little bit easier to visualize. Uh, let me explain how to read this chart. The clusters, each cluster of bars here represents one project or a total. Um, this cluster here is Marketplace, this is the Transit Center, this one is Gateway, this one is Site B, and this one is Novartis. So, the four on the left are the four major development projects, and then this one over here is Novartis. This, uh, group is a total of these five, and the far-right bar chart is a total of only the four major development projects, not including Novartis. The blue bar represents the base ITE rate, so straight out of the ITE book, what would the trip generation be? Uh, the kind of maroon-colored bar represents the final ITE rates as calculated by Farr and Piers with their adjustments, and the yellowish bar represents the, um, Urbemis computer model taking into account the TDM measures by Nelson Nygaard. So, there's several things I want to point out about this, um, chart. I'm gonna just make a quick adjustment to my, uh, to my pointer here, so it doesn't keep disappearing. Okay. Um, one thing that I want to point out is the Gateway Project, and it's incredibly small, trip generation, uh, almost zero.
It's negative.
Well, for Urbemis, it is negative.
How do you do that?
It is negative for Urbemis. Um, the reason for that is that for all of these projects, you take the trips that are currently generated by what's already on the site, and you subtract that from the trips that will be generated by the new uses. Uh, in both the Marketplace and Site B, there really isn't anything on the site. Site B is vacant, and the Marketplace, it's mostly surface parking lots that are gonna be put in structures, so there's really no trips to be replaced on either of those sites. Transit Center also has a surface parking lot, so these are predominantly new trips. Gateway, however, has a gas station, a Denny's restaurant, a Wells Fargo Bank, an office building, and a lot of other uses. So, once you subtract all of those trips out of the, you know, proposed new project, you end up with very small numbers. And it's just interesting to note that, because this is the project that caused all the concern about traffic in the first place, and was why we, why we undertook these studies. Um, the other projects do generate somewhat more trips. Another thing that's interesting to observe about this is that for two of the four major development projects, the Urbemis rates are actually slightly higher than the Farr and Piers adjusted rates, Site B and Marketplace. For the Transit Center and Gateway, they're lower. For the Novartis Project, they're quite a bit lower than the, I, than the Farr and Piers adjusted rates. Now, if we look at the total of all five, uh, this big bar here is the ITE rate straight out of the book. The Farr and Piers adjusted rates are thirty-one percent lower than that, excuse me, and the Urbemis adjusted rates are thirty-eight percent lower. If we look at the four major development projects without Novartis, the Farr and Piers and Urbemis rates are about the same. They're both about forty-two percent less than the base ITE rates. Uh, Urbemis is slightly less, but not enough to change the percentage. So, we have another chart for Saturday, which is a similar thing. Uh, you can see here on Saturday, both Transit Center and Gateway generate practically nothing, because they don't really have a big retail component. Um, Site B and Marketplace would generate somewhat more. Novartis, again, would not generate very much, because it's mainly an office, uh, office use. And again, if you compare the totals, uh, with Novartis, Farr and Piers' rates are about thirty-eight percent less than ITE, and, uh, Novar, uh, Nelson Nygaard's rates are about thirty-seven percent less. And actually, if you look at the total on Saturday without Novartis, it's reversed, where the, uh, Urbemis rates are thirty-eight percent less than ITE, and Farr and Piers is actually thirty-nine percent less. So, the Urbemis rates and the Farr and Piers adjusted rates are gen, result in approximately the same amount of traffic. This graph shows the eleven impacted intersections. This is kind of a series of pie charts that are stretched out into lines, uh, so that you can compare them. What it does is it gives you a percentage from zero to a hundred here of what the breakdown is of the contribution of traffic from various sources to each of the eleven intersections. So, the big, uh, dark gray bar on the right is traffic that's already- So the big dark gray bar on the right is traffic that's already out there today. The crosshatching next to that is traffic from future non-Emeryville projects, which presumably are primarily in Oakland and Berkeley. And the lighter gray to the left of that is traffic from future Emeryville projects other than these ones that we're talking about. And then the black bar on the far left is the contribution of the four major development projects plus Novartis, full buildout of Novartis. As you can see, just about every intersection, the contribution of these projects is less than 10%. There are only two, these two here, where the contribution is more than 10%. It's roughly 20. At 65th-Shellmount and Overland, it's about 22%. And at the Powell Street off-ramps of I-80, that's the eastbound ramps, it's about 18%. And everywhere else, as I say, it's probably less than 10, 10 or less. In addition, Nelson-Nygard, in conjunction with Farr and Pierce, took another look at vehicle queuing issues in 2030, and they determined that these five locations will be impacted by vehicle queues in that year, specifically at the I-80 off-ramp from, at Powell Street, at the Powell-Christie intersection on Powell, Christie, and Shellmount Way, and also coming westbound across the Powell Street Bridge. Over here at 40th and San Pablo, on San Pablo and 40th Street, and on 40th, it would back up beyond Emery Street. This is all in the afternoon peak hour on weekdays. At 65th-Shellmount and Overland, there would be queues on all approaches except coming westbound from 65th, and that would be complicated also by having to stop for trains whenever they come and block the crossing. At Powell and Hollis, there will be queues on Hollis Street, both north and southbound. In the southbound direction, it would back up beyond 59th. In the northbound direction, it will back up beyond Stanford. And finally, down at 40th and Horton, there will be a queue on Horton Street backing up beyond Park Avenue. So to summarize what the Farr and Pierce and Kimley-Horn recommendations were to deal with these traffic issues, they recommended modifying the existing signals at all of the intersections where there are signals, which is most of them. They also recommended a few new signals where we don't have signals today. And they also did recommend the pedestrian recall phase in the Shellmount-Christie loop area. They also recommended adding turn lanes at these various intersections. In some intersections, it would be a new turn lane where there isn't one now. In other intersections, it would be adding an additional lane, so you'd have a double turning lane. And finally, they recommended some street reconfigurations, which would be widening at these locations, widening of the Powell Street Bridge west end to provide a second left turn lane, removing the bus stops and the medians on San Pablo. This is in Oakland and Berkeley, at Stanford and Ashby, and that's to allow for additional left turn lanes. And finally, they did recommend the one-way Shellmount-Christie couplet here. This table, which is a lot of information that I'll try to help you decipher, gives the so-called level of service of the intersections under various scenarios. Level of service, as I'm sure you know, is a measure of how efficiently the intersection moves cars through it. And it ranges from A to F, where A is considered excellent and F is considered terrible. And generally speaking, A, B, C, and D are considered acceptable, and E and F are considered unacceptable. And that's why E and F is in bold on the table, so you can easily spot them, and all the other levels are not in bold. There's the 11 intersections here, and we have both the PM peak hour on a weekday and the Saturday peak hour for all the intersections, except there are three intersections where we only have weekdays, not Saturdays. So the existing level of service as of 2007 is shown in this column, and as you can see, there's two that are currently at E, the Powell Street I-80 off-ramp on the weekday PM peak, and the Mandela Parkway and Horton Street intersection, which is in Oakland, also in the PM weekday peak. Now, this column here, which looks kind of brown up on the wall and sort of pink on the screen, is what the future level of service would be under the Farr and Pierce's final ITE trip generation rate assumptions without any of the roadway changes recommended by Farr and Pierce and Kimley-Horn. As you can see, a lot of Es and Fs. The Urbemis model, which is blue on my screen and green on the wall, results essentially in the same levels of service. The only place where it's different is right here at Ashby and Seventh during the PM peak, where it goes from F to E. And actually, this is for all four projects plus Novartis. If you took Novartis out and the trip generation's basically the same as Farr and Pierce, then I think these would probably both be F. This column over here, which actually looks blue on both my screen and on the wall, shows what the level of service would be if the four major development projects and were not, and Novartis, and even limited Novartis, were not constructed. And as you can see, it doesn't really make a whole lot of difference. There's only three locations where there is a difference between this and the unadjusted and the adjusted final ITE rates. At Powell and Christie, in the PM peak hour, it goes from E to D. At Powell and Hollis, on a Saturday, it goes from D to C. And at 40th and San Pablo, on the PM peak hour, it goes from F to E. All the other intersections have the same level of service regardless of whether the four major development projects are built or not.
Sure. Yes.
Does that assume that the roadway changes that Farr and Pierce recommended would be made or not?
No.
No change in the roadway?
No changes. I'm going to get, that's the next column. These roadway changes, which I think in your handout it says Farr and Pierce roadway changes at the top of this column, but I fixed that. It's actually both the Farr and Pierce and the Kimley-Horn roadway changes because it includes the one-way Shellmount-Christie loop, all the things that I showed you on the previous three slides. This is what would be the resulting level of service with the roadway changes if the four development projects and Novartis were all built out. And just to help you focus on what the differences are between this and the level of service without those changes, I've circled all the places where they're different, and there's a little code here. On the right column, if the circle is red, it means that the level of service is still considered unacceptable, but it's been improved somewhat. So in other words, it went from F to E. If it's green, it means it went from an unacceptable level to an acceptable level, so either F or E to D. And that's in six locations. And if it's yellow, which is just this one, the level of service was already considered acceptable before. Now, it's a little bit better acceptable at C. And then these other times of these various intersections, these four, did not change. So that would be the result of the roadway changes that Farr and Pierce and Kimley-Horn recommended. Now, concerning the Nelson-Nygard assessment of these roadway changes on pedestrians, bicycles, and public transit, in the report itself, you'll see that this table has a lot of text in it. In each little box here, there's a lot of text. And what we did was, in order to try to simplify this and make it a little easier to understand, we boiled it all down to either a red signal, a yellow signal, or a green signal, where red is mostly negative comments, yellow is sort of a mix of negative and positive comments, or else it didn't seem to have much effect, and green is mostly positive comments. And Nelson-Nygard has reviewed this, and we did actually change a couple of these as a result of their review. So first of all, increasing roadway, oh, and let me also say here, this is not an intersection-by-intersection analysis. Nelson-Nygard did not go back and look at each of the 11 intersections and assess the roadway changes that Farr and Pierce or Kimley-Horn recommended. Rather, this is a more generic analysis of the types of changes that Farr and Pierce and Kimley-Horn were recommending. So that's what this is. The first is increasing roadway width and auto right-of-way, which is considered mostly bad for pedestrians and cyclists and neutral for public transit. Converting a parking lane to a vehicle-through lane, which is not good for pedestrians or bicyclists, but is good for public transit. Removing the median, which is considered not good for pedestrians because it takes away a refuge, sort of neutral for cyclists, not considered good for transit because medians can serve as bus stops if the bus lane is in the middle or for light rail. Adding a median, on the other hand, is considered neutral for pedestrians and cyclists and a benefit for transit. Widening the freeway off-ramp is considered neutral for all three. That's primarily because pedestrians and cyclists can't use the freeway off-ramp anyway, and not very much public transit does. However, staff would point out that this particular freeway off-ramp has a crosswalk at the bottom of it, which is the Bay Trail alignment, and adding a lane to it will make it wider and will be more of a distance that pedestrians and cyclists will have to get across. Double turn lanes are considered bad for pedestrians and cyclists, somewhat neutral for public transit, although it's noted that it's, it might be kind of hard for a big bus to stay in its lane if it's going around a turn that has two lanes. Optimizing signal timing for autos and thereby reducing the crossing time for pedestrians is seen as neutral for pedestrians and cyclists and a benefit for transit. And I want to point out here that the crossing time for pedestrians actually would not be reduced. Pedestrians would always be allotted enough signal time that they could get safely across the street. But what might happen is they might have to wait longer between signal cycles. So you might be standing there longer before you get a green light.
How much longer?
It depends on the signal. It depends on what the adjustment was.
Can I ask you a question? Because I didn't remember seeing this, but for the times that allow...
For the time for pedestrians to cross the street, because I know at some intersections there's already not enough time, so adding, well, it says you're not reducing, but would ever there be a situation where a time is added for the pedestrian crossings, and is that in here?
Well, I don't, that was not included in Farr and Pierce and Kimley-Horn recommendations. They were looking at moving automobiles primarily. They didn't really ever say what the exact changes would be to signal timing. They simply identified intersections where they recommended changing the timing of signals, but they didn't say how many seconds more it would be or whatever. But I don't believe they ever recommended increasing the pedestrian crossing time. But, I mean, we can get into that in the discussion, and they can certainly answer that question as well. Narrowing vehicle lanes is seen as somewhat good, somewhat bad for all three modes. And adding a Class 1 bike lane along Powell Street, which was something that was looked at, was considered neutral for pedestrians. Obviously, a Class 1 bike lane is probably good for cyclists, and not much of an effect on public transit. Concerning the so-called out-of-the-box ideas that were recommended by Kimley-Horn, of the seven ideas they recommended, three. One was the Shellmount-Christie one-way loop, which was considered bad for pedestrians because, primarily because of high-speed traffic, that it might result in traffic going faster. Neutral for cyclists, and probably a benefit for public transit because it would help the buses to get through the area faster. Pedestrian bridges is considered bad for pedestrians. Nelson-Nygard makes the comment that that would relegate pedestrians to the status of second-class citizens, and you'll see later that staff concurs in that assessment. Cyclists would be a neutral effect. For public transit, it would be a benefit because the buses would be able to get through faster, although it's also noted that because it's not good for pedestrians, it might make it harder to get to the bus stop. Pedestrian recall signal is considered a benefit for all three modes. And as I said at the beginning, Farr and Pierce has also prepared their own assessment of the impacts on pedestrians and cyclists of these proposed roadway changes, and theirs is specific to each intersection. And that memo is included in the Certified Final IR for the Marketplace, and you also have a copy of it in front of you. So Nelson-Nygard concludes that none of the proposed roadway changes should be implemented because, in combination, they would have a significant negative impact on pedestrians, cyclists, and public transit in an area that is already heavily auto-oriented. Other strategies to support other modes of transportation have the potential to maintain or reduce traffic volumes. The roadway changes would be costly, and they would only have limited improvements in traffic conditions. Many of the intersections would still operate at level of service E or F. The improvements in traffic conditions would be ephemeral due to the so-called generated traffic phenomenon, sort of colloquial, colloquially known as if you want more traffic, widen your streets. The concept here is that if we improve our street conditions, then people will come and drive on those streets that might not have driven there otherwise, thereby increasing our traffic. And finally, the roadway changes would be a one-time fix with no ability to accommodate further development with further roadway changes. In conclusion, Nelson-Nygard recommends strategies for change for sustainable transportation in Emeryville. First, they recommend developing aggressive TDM policies and programs for each of the four major development projects and Novartis, moving forward with the alternative transportation plan, expanding the role of the Emeryville TMA, which is the entity that runs the Emery Go-Round and is now getting into the car-sharing business. Adopting progressive parking policies that reduce externalization of the cost to park, just to explain what that means. People who come and park in a free parking space don't have to pay anything to park there, but that doesn't mean the parking space is free. Somebody ends up paying for it. In other words, the cost is externalized. So this would be some sort of a pricing policy that would shift the burden of the cost of that parking space to the person who's actually parking there, and thereby would tend to reduce the tendency of people to want to drive. Adopting a comprehensive, complete streets approach to transportation impact analysis and street design. This is a concept where all modes of transportation and urban design are taken into account when you design your streets, not just moving cars. Developing a general plan which is mutually supportive of these efforts and all the other planning efforts we're doing in the city. Committing to no further expansions of roadway vehicle capacity until other solutions to help people travel have been fully explored and evaluated. And finally, reviewing and revising the criteria defining what a significant impact is under SEQA. Currently, we have a kind of an informal policy that says anything worse than D is a significant impact. We don't have to say that. The city could adopt a policy that E or F is acceptable and therefore is not considered significant under SEQA, and therefore doesn't have to be mitigated. That's sort of a double-edged sword, though, because if you say it's not significant and doesn't have to be mitigated, then you can't impose a mitigation measure on a developer and ask them to help pay for whatever improvements you want to make. So we have to kind of think about that a little bit.
Couldn't you have other mitigation TDMs and all these other measures that address the issue?
Yeah, I'm just saying that it's not a slam dunk. We'd have to think about it, what the ramifications would be.
Okay.
So that concludes our summary of the Nelson-Nygard report. And now I'll move into the staff conclusions and then the staff recommendations. Remember the question I asked you to remember way back in the beginning about traffic and these four projects? Returning to that question, it was, slightly reworded here, "Will the four major development projects separately or in combination cause traffic congestion that would not occur otherwise?" And it seems pretty conclusive from the work of all three of these consultants. They all agree, Farr and Pierce, Kimley-Horn, and Nelson-Nygard, that there will be traffic congestion in the future in Emeryville, whether or not the four major development projects are built. Traffic will be marginally worse with these projects, and therefore, they should pay their fair share towards whatever measures we decide are appropriate for addressing future traffic. However, having said that, development of these projects is probably desirable because high-density, mixed-use urban development is one of the best ways to reduce dependence on automobiles and to promote alternative modes of transportation. Now, where Farr and Pierce and Kimley-Horn and Nelson-Nygard differ is in how to address this future traffic congestion. Farr and Pierce and Kimley-Horn emphasize the movement of autos, sometimes at the expense of pedestrians, cyclists, and transit, while Nelson-Nygard emphasized pedestrians, bicyclists, and transit, sometimes at the expense of auto movement. Staff recommends a balanced approach that optimizes all modes of transportation, and we'll talk about what we mean by that.
You're the two-handed economist. You're the two-handed economist, huh?
Yeah, that's right. Splitting the baby. First, we think the city, specifically the General Plan Update Steering Committee, Planning Commission, and ultimately, the City Council, need to decide on what the city's basic transportation goals are, and everything else flows from that. We would suggest two goals that might be considered. One is to emphasize a diversity of transportation modes and choices, provide incentives for alternative transportation modes, including transit, carpooling, bicycling, and walking. This should look very familiar to Commissioners Donaldson, Jeffrey, and Hoth because it comes straight out of the General Plan Update Preferred Plan. In addition to that, we would recommend, or suggest, a possible goal of providing convenient access to regional retail sales stores by all transportation... access to regional retail sales stores by all transportation modes, including automobiles. Because strong retail sales generate revenues, and those revenues help to pay for our city services, and it's really not reasonable to expect someone to go to IKEA to pick up a bookcase or a couch or something on the bus or a bicycle or by walking. They're gonna want to drive their car.
Good challenge.
So we need to continue to provide automobile access to our regional retail stores. Where is that? This is another map that came out of the General Plan Update. This is in the report that you'll be seeing on March 22nd, the so-called City Structure Report that kind of simplifies the land use patterns and circulation patterns and activity centers and other attributes of the Preferred Plan. And I would point to this box up here in the legend, which you probably can't read, so we'll make it bigger. It says "Regional Retail," and that is this area down here along Shellmount, below Powell Street, and along south of 40th Street. The major vehicular access to that area is by this red line, which is Powell Street, I mean, I'm sorry, San Pablo Avenue, 40th Street, Shellmount, up to the Ashby-Shellmount Interchange, Christie, and Powell. So that's the route where we would suggest that automobile access should continue to be accommodated. So we are going to now walk intersection by intersection through the 11 intersections and the seven out-of-the-box ideas and tell you what staff's recommendation for each of them is. But before I do that, I'm going to tell you what the rationale for that, those recommendations are. So the principles are, first, road widening should only be pursued along access routes to regional retail destinations. And I would note that some of those widenings are already included in our existing traffic impact fee. So there's already money in the bank from existing developments to pay for some of these roadway changes, and there will continue to be as new development comes in. Turning lane modifications should only be pursued if adequate bicycle access is maintained. Changes to intersections in other cities should only be pursued if the other city and Caltrans, if it's a state highway, agrees and requests that change. If they don't want it, obviously, we're not going to do it or participate in it. Signal timing modifications should be pursued because they're inexpensive to do and they really have minimal effects on pedestrians and cyclists. It's true pedestrians might have to wait a little longer, but so will cars, so will bicycles. You know, the pain is kind of spread equally to all modes. So as I say here, pedestrians may have to wait longer to cross, but there will always be adequate crossing time. Roadway changes should include traffic calming measures. All roadway changes should include traffic calming measures and provisions for transit, bicyclists, and pedestrians. And this is just a list we kind of came up with. I'm sure there could be many other things. But they would include things like bulbouts at intersections and crosswalks, raised or textured crosswalks to make the pedestrian realm feel like, to make the automobiles feel like they have to cross the pedestrian realm, rather than the pedestrian feel like they have to cross the auto realm. It's a subtle thing, but I think it's pretty important. Landscape medians, including pedestrian refuges, bike lanes and/or bike paths, bicycle-sensitive signal detectors, that's real important because if you're on a bicycle and you can't get the signal to change, which has happened to me many times, it's really frustrating. Street trees, planter strips, and on-street parking along between the sidewalk and the street to buffer pedestrians from traffic wherever that's possible. Bus stops with pedestrian amenities, signal priority for buses, bus lanes and bus-only queue jump lanes. A queue jump lane is where you have a bus-only lane on the far-right side at an intersection so the buses can go around the traffic that's waiting for the signal and then go across the intersection to the bus stop when the light changes to green. Finally, a citywide 25 mile-per-hour speed limit, which may seem radical, but Farr and Pierce thinks that's a great idea. It would have no impact on level of service. The idea is to move traffic efficiently through the city, not fast. So you don't have to go fast to move efficiently. And some streets, the speed limit might be less than 25. So with all those caveats and principles, these are staff's recommendations for the roadway changes at the intersections and the out-of-the-box ideas. First, at the Ashby-7th Street intersection, which is in Berkeley, the only thing that's recommended there is signal timing, and we say, sure, why not? Except it's not in our jurisdiction, so we can't implement it, but, you know, we would recommend doing it. Ashby-San Pablo, where the recommendation is signal timing, widening of Ashby, additional turn lanes, and removing the median. In line with our principle, we would say only do that if Berkeley and Caltrans agree to it and only if impacts on transit pedestrians and cyclists can be minimized. 65th and Shellmount and Overland is only signal timing. That's the only thing Farr and Pierce recommends. And if you remember that kind of strung-out bar graph of all the intersections, this is one of the two intersections where these four major development projects account for over 20% of the future traffic. And that can be fixed or largely addressed through just signal timing. So we say yes. Why not? Do that.
Why is Nelson Nygaard saying no to that?
Well, Nelson Nygaard basically said no to all the roadway changes. They didn't go through them one by one. If you recall their recommendation, it said, "Don't do any of these roadway changes." So I just...
Until we study further.
So we just put a no in every box. Right, till we study further. Powell Street I-80 eastbound ramps is, that's the other intersection where this traffic accounts for almost 20% of the traffic from the four major development projects and Novartis. That involves signal timing, widening, and an additional turn lane. Our recommendation is yes, that should be done. It is on a regional retail access route, and it's already included in the traffic impact fee, so we're already paying for it. However, safety must be enhanced for the Bay Trail crossing for pedestrians and bicycles. At Powell and Christie, the big one, that involves signal timing, widening of Powell, widening of Christie, widening the bridge, and additional turn lanes. Staff recommends that that should be done because it is on a major, on the regional retail access route. However, travel by all modes of transportation, not just automobiles, must be optimized in the design of this, and it should be part of a comprehensive streetscape design for the area.
And it includes the bridge?
Right. Well, the bridge, only the west end of the bridge, which is the east leg of the Powell-Christie intersection. So it's just that approach to the intersection, which happens to be the end of the bridge, not the whole bridge. So we're not recommending widening the entire bridge.
Oh, okay. I thought you were talking about a pedestrian bridge over Powell at Christie. That's not what you're talking about here.
No, these are the roadway changes to the Powell-Christie intersection. I'll get to the pedestrian bridges in a second. Powell and Hollis, signal timing and widening of Hollis is the recommendation. Staff recommends the signal timing should be done, but not the widening of Hollis Street. That would involve the demolition of an existing building, most likely, and it's not on a regional retail access route, and it wouldn't really change the level of service very much. I think it still stays at F. Staff recommendations for roadway changes continued here. Stanford and San Pablo, signal timing, turning lanes, and removing the median are recommended. This is in Oakland and on a state highway, so again, we would only recommend it if Oakland and Caltrans agreed and if impacts to pedestrians, transit, and cyclists are minimized. 40th and Horton, signal timing, turn lanes, and widening of Horton are recommended. We recommend the signal timing and the turn lane, but not the widening. It may appear from the map to be on a regional retail access route, but it's not really because this is on a side street, and it's mainly a route for commuters, which can be addressed through TDM measures. The turn lane should be added, but only by removing on-street parking, not by widening the street. And the design should include bike lanes or certainly adequate access for bicycles. 40th and Emory is exactly the same situation and exactly the same recommendation. 40th and San Pablo, which is another major intersection on the regional retail access route, they are recommending signal timing, widening of 40th, and turn lanes. That's an additional right turn lane going from eastbound 40th to southbound San Pablo. And that would probably result in the removal of the black-and-white liquor store on the north side of the street. We would recommend that, but bicyclists must be accommodated in the design. As I said, it is on the regional retail access route, and it's another improvement that is already included in the traffic impact fee, so there's already money available for it. And the last roadway change is the Mandela Parkway-Horton Street intersection, where new signal, turn lanes, and widening of Horton are recommended. That's in Oakland, and we would only recommend doing it if Oakland agrees. We would also point out that both Horton and Mandela Parkway are part of the Bay Trail at that location. The Bay Trail comes down Horton and turns onto Mandela, so the Bay Trail alignment has to be considered in the design. And we would just note here that Best Buy is already required to install that signal when conditions warrant as a condition of their approval from Oakland. So now with regard to the so-called out-of-the-box concepts, the Shellmount-Christie one-way loop was recommended by Kimbley-Horn. Staff is not recommending doing that at this time. However, we do think that we shouldn't completely discount it. It does make significant difference, so we're recommending to consider it in the future if conditions warrant. But if it were done ever, it would, should be done only in conjunction with the comprehensive traffic calming techniques that I mentioned above, including a 25 mile-an-hour speed limit, bulbouts, and parking next to the curb, and all that kind of stuff. Transit, cyclists, and pedestrians must be accommodated. This, I would note, this is on a regional retail access route from the Shellmount-Ashby-Shellmount Interchange down to Shellmount and 40th Streets. Moving Shellmount Way to the North is not recommended by Kimbley-Horn because they determined that the traffic improvements were marginal in relation to the cost of doing this. However, staff does recommend doing this, not for traffic reasons, but for urban design reasons, which we feel are at least as or more than important than the traffic reasons. This would enhance the street grid for pedestrians and cyclists. Reconfiguring the lanes on Powell and Christie, this is really, goes along with the changes at the Powell-Christie intersection and the off-ramp, and our recommendation there is the same, which is that it should be done, but travel by all modes should be optimized, and it should be part of a comprehensive streetscape design for the whole area. This is on a regional access route, and it's a location where the off-ramp is impacted quite a bit by the traffic from these four major projects. Adding a north crosswalk at the Powell-Christie intersection and a pedestrian scramble phase there, we do recommend that crosswalk, and we would note that actually, if you look at the Farr and Pierce memo, their analysis of this intersection, they, they point out that their, their roadway changes do include a new crosswalk at the north leg of this intersection and a 10-foot median in the center to act as a pedestrian refuge. The scramble signal, however, we would not recommend right now because there's not enough pedestrian traffic at that intersection to justify it, but we shouldn't, again, we shouldn't discount it completely. We might want to consider it in the future if conditions warrant. Pedestrian bridges over the street in the Shellmount-Christie Loop area, that was recommended by Kimbley-Horn because it basically gets the pedestrians out of the way of the cars and makes the cars move faster. Nelson Nygaard said, "No, don't do it. It relegates pedestrians to second-class status." We agree. The pedestrian recall phase seems like kind of a no-brainer. It's good for everybody, and there don't seem to be any downsides to it, so we recommend that. And finally, the Powell Street Bridge reconfiguration, reducing it by one lane and adding a bike and pedestrian lane, frankly, Kimbley-Horn's analysis of that wasn't too detailed. It seemed pretty obvious to them that taking away a car lane is going to cause a lot more congestion and queuing, which I'm sure is true. But staff feels that we need, even if we don't do that particular thing, we do need to continue to explore ways to improve pedestrian and bicycle access on the bridge. So we don't have the answer, but we're saying, let's not forget about it. So finally, I want to summarize our recommendations for roadway changes with this little map here. Here are the 11 intersections. We're recommending signal timing changes only at these three locations. At these two locations, we're recommending signal timing and a turn lane, but no widening. These three locations are in either Oakland or Berkeley, and we would only recommend changes there if those jurisdictions agree to them. Finally, where we are recommending widening, along with signal timing and turning lanes, are at these three intersections. And I would note that at 40th and San Pablo, which is 29, and the off-ramp, which is 10, those are already included in the traffic impact fee. The only one that isn't is Powell and Christie. So those are the only places where we think there should be any widening done.
So the improvements at 29, do they include a median? There's no median there now at the crossing.
I don't believe so.
Not even on San Pablo? Because there are mediums. You get, you end up with a median, but I assume for the turn lane, you...
Well, San Pablo wouldn't be widened. Only 40th would be widened to add a lane. So I'm, I'm not sure if that would, we could probably add a median in the design. It would just mean the lanes would get shifted over a little bit more.
Yeah, you're talking about taking out black, black-and-white liquor there.
Yeah.
Isn't intersection one in Berkeley?
Yes, it is.
So...
Yeah, well, so I mean, I could, we could have said, put that, an orange thing around that, but it's only signal timing, so.
We might talk him into it.
We have some additional control on 32, though, as part of the JPA, right?
Uh, probably. Probably some. I, I'm not sure how, to what extent our jurisdiction extends to the streets.
And then for 10, the improvements to the crosswalk there, what's envisioned? Just a longer crossing phase?
We don't have, we don't have any of these things designed. We're just saying what, what the factors are that need to be taken into account.
Right, which includes improved pedestrian.
Yeah, and I'll tell you, personally, to me, one thing that's a real hazard at that intersection is the bushes.
Vegetation, yeah.
You can't see around the corner. You can't, car coming down that off-ramp can't see a bicycle or pedestrian standing there. So that definitely needs to be fixed.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, there's a lot of design issues. And this is why we said that this should be a comprehensive streetscape design for this whole area, because, you know, there's so many issues that have to be addressed, and we don't have the answers tonight. So just to try to wrap it up here. Finally, with our, our recommendations on the so-called out-of-the-box ideas, moving Shellmount Way to the North, we think should be done, considering the Shellmount-Christie one-way loop in the future if conditions warrant, considering a pedestrian scramble phase at Powell and Christie in the future, and possibly other intersections if conditions warrant, and implementing the pedestrian recall signals in the Shellmount-Christie Loop area, and finally, continuing to explore ways to improve pedestrian and bicycle access on the bridge. Now regarding TDM measures, you know, Nelson Nygaard had a lot of good ideas in that regard, and we should follow up on those. We should develop parking policies through the Parking Study that's currently being done by Wilbur Smith. We should develop plans for improved public transit, pedestrian, and bicycle travel through the Alternative Transportation Study that Nelson Nygaard is now doing. We need to complete our network of pedestrian and bicycle facilities in the city. We should adopt a comprehensive, complete streets approach to streetscape design, and we should require comprehensive TDM plans for all the major development projects, similar to the one that was recently done for the Marketplace project. The next steps we would recommend are, first, to continue the planning efforts for those four major development projects, Marketplace, Site B, Gateway, and Transit Center. Complete the Alternative Transportation Study by Nelson Nygaard. Complete the Parking Study by Wilbur Smith. Consider the draft Preferred Plan of the General Plan Update, which you will be doing with the City Council on March 22nd, and that includes citywide transportation policies and plan. Developing a citywide transportation demand management program as part of the General Plan and Zoning Update. And finally, updating the traffic impact fee to include the identified roadway changes. So in conclusion, a few little pretty pictures to kind of lighten it up here. Farr and Pierce and Kimbley-Horn recommendations tend to be heavily weighted towards the automobile and sometimes give kind of a short shrift to the bicycles, pedestrians, and public transit. Nelson Nygaard's recommendations, on the other hand, give great weight to pedestrians, bicycles, and transit, sometimes at the expense of automobiles. We recommend a balanced approach. So that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to respond to any questions you may have. And as I said, we have representatives from Nelson Nygaard, Kimbley-Horn, and Farr and Pierce here, and they can also answer your questions.
Great job, Charlie.
Thank you. Charlie, yeah, in terms of the completion of the Wilbur Smith Parking Study and the Nelson Nygaard Study, when, when can we anticipate those being done?
I don't have the exact timeline, so I don't know. Helen, do you know the timeline for the Parking Study? We don't have those right now. I'm not sure, Todd, do you know the timeline for the Nelson, for your Alternative Transportation Study?
We're just now beginning it because we've been working on this for, so...
I would say probably six months at least for both of them.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
Great job.
Well, is there, I guess one of those things we can do is hear from the public, if there's anyone wishing to comment, that we have a letter from...
The Newspingston.
The Marketplace, right, which I haven't had a chance to look at.
I haven't looked at it.
I imagine others haven't. Is there anyone else wishing to address the commission on this study? This is your opportunity to weigh in. Nobody's standing up. I don't, you know, I think Charlie, you did a great job.
Yes.
Summarizing something is really... Summarizing something that's really complex, and there's still more information in terms of this balanced approach that you're talking about. And especially for the individual projects, I'm going to want to understand what's proposed in terms of options for specific intersections.
Sure.
Before I sort of weigh in, but, you know, I get, my impression is that, you know, I have, I tend to agree with, you know, staff's balanced approach here, and want to see the options when it comes down to the individual projects and the specific intersections in terms of making sure we're not compromising any further the pedestrian, bicycle, transit options as an alternative there. So, because I think there's a lot of useful information in the Nelson Nygaard study that I was glad to see.
Mm-hmm.
So, go ahead, Art.
The impression I had was, the report was attempted to be fair and balanced, but it appears that most of the Nelson Nygaard recommendations were discounted. So it didn't seem all that balanced to me. My problem is, though, that, well, I fear and Pierce come up with specific, tangible recommendations that we could put our hands around or thoughts around. Nelson Nygaard only comes up with euphemical things. This is what we might be able to do, is before we plunge ahead and start widening streets, is it possible that we can get a more detailed report from Nelson Nygaard which says, "Well, here is what we specifically recommend, and this is the impact that will have on these districts." All they've come, all they've said so far is, you know, this, if we explore these possibilities, we may be able to improve traffic, but they haven't come up with any specific ideas.
Right, well, they've done a preliminary review.
And so I would think that we ought to give them time to really respond to the staff report and say, "Here's why they think that their proposals will work."
I think that's their next phase.
What is their scope? What are we going to see from Nelson Nygaard in six months?
Well, for the alternative transportation study, the main product, Todd and Jeremy, maybe you can help out here, but I believe it's to look at existing transportation, public transportation services in Emeryville, AC Transit, Emery Go-Round, whatever else there is, Amtrak, I guess. Interview a lot of stakeholders, find out what their transit, public transit needs are, analyze the existing public transit service, figure out what the gap is between needs and present services, and then recommend ways of filling that gap. And I believe it also includes ideas and recommendations for improving pedestrian and bicycle environment, but I'm not clear on exactly what that would entail.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of the, a lot of the areas where Farr and Pierce and Kimley-Horn have suggested improvements. I really appreciated staff's approach, both in the balance and in the fact of recognizing that we are relying on regional retail for a lot of stuff that we appreciate in the city. And, you know, anecdotally, I can't tell you how many people I hear saying, "Oh, I don't go down to Bay Street. The traffic's terrible. I can't get there. I can't park, and I'm frustrated when I leave." So I think it's a good thing to keep that in mind. And I think that there are a lot of the specific solutions that you have put on the list of things that staff recommended or said we should look at, that do have a more comprehensive design solution than what was looked at by Farr and Pierce and Kimley-Horn. That was one of my frustrations with the first couple of studies, was that they said, "Widen stuff here, put a bridge there, do this," but they didn't say, they didn't consider design implications of how you might do that without compromising bicycle and pedestrian use. Because I think that we can come to a more balanced solution, as staff has suggested, and I think that in a lot of instances, that really is on a specific intersection by intersection, how are pedestrians moving, how are bicycles moving? And if we add a lane here, how are we going to accommodate pedestrians and bicycles in a positive way? So again, I appreciate the thought that staff has put into synthesizing the different elements, because it's a pretty complex bundle of stuff.
Maybe it would be useful to have Nelson Nygaard's scope expanded to also look at those specific location and intersection options, you know, short of just the Farr and Pierce, Kimley-Horn sort of vehicle-oriented solution, to weigh in specifically on an intersection and the different options for dealing with it that include consideration of alternative transportation. It's useful to look at it globally and have these broad recommendations, but for me, I want to know that we've got the best solution, and we've exhausted the options for specific locations, whether it's Powell and Christie, or Shellmount Way, or something else, and...
Yeah, me too.
Especially where we, the city's been collecting impact fees for certain intersections. And, you know, what can we do if we have funds that will partially pay for it now, or, you know, or there's enough to pay for it? I think those are the ones that should be prioritized, where we've got some money where we can actually implement some of these improvements.
Well, I was particularly disappointed in this Nelson Nygaard report, in that it had no specifics on anything. It merely seemed to support a philosophy of not using cars. And, you know, in the best of all possible world, that might make sense, but we, most of the traffic in Emeryville is generated from outside of Emeryville anyway. And we're not going to change that unless we put up gates. So...
Not a bad idea.
It just, from the generalizations, and that's all that's in here, it didn't strike me as a balanced approach.
But I think what it did is sort of raise the conversation and pointed out some options that, you know, with staff's input and sort of this idea of a balanced approach, has pushed us probably a little bit from the auto-centered focus into a place that I'd certainly like us to be heading. And I realize they also have limitations in what their current scope was, was to really sort of take a broad brush, a look at these, their impression of the big four.
Mm-hmm.
I'm just concerned about their continuing scope, that again, we're not going to get any specifics out of them, and it'd be nice to somehow fold into their scope where we can, some, at least weigh in on options for specific intersections and locations.
You know, I'm not sure that Nelson Nygaard will ever come up with anything that's acceptable to me after they really get specific. But if you look at the chart, not a single one of their recommendations were accepted. What's balanced about that?
But they didn't make specific intersection...
I was talking about staff presenting a balanced approach.
No, this is the staff.
No, this is the staff.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
This is Nelson Nygaard, and it was because their first study was more of a conceptual, broad-based study.
I think we got it, yeah.
Well, I think one of the issues in terms of, and it's a challenge for our city in that we've got a vital regional shopping base. We've got the regional tier that we need to accommodate to maintain our financial viability. And we just have to figure out a way that we can also make sure that those residents that live in town can also move around, and, you know, it's, our city is a little bit more than a mile square, and if we can come up with a package that allows people in many instances to get around and do what they need to do at a community level, with perhaps not getting in their car, you know? And that is accomplished by safe sidewalks, you know, a ped priority at certain places, urban design issues that, you know, go well beyond these studies. But I think we're looking at a two-tier system, depending upon who the user group is, and how can we integrate that? And that's going to be a challenge.
Well, I would note that, you know, what I hear from people who live in Emeryville is that they want to be able to walk and ride bicycles and take Emery Go-Round around, but they also want to be able to get in their car and drive somewhere without getting...
To Ikea.
Bottled up in, to Ikea, right, or wherever. So it's sort of a, you know, they want us to solve all the problems.
Oh, of course. Well, you know, I think once we have the ped overcrossing that connects, you know, the east side of the city with Bay Street, that'll be a really positive first step, because a lot of folks can, you know, walk over there and go to the movies, get something to eat, do shopping, you know, where they're not hauling home a bookcase, you know, that type of thing.
Well, I would also point out, it wasn't part of this presentation, because it wasn't part of any of our consultants' reports, which is what this really focused on, but the upcoming joint meeting with the city council, where you're going to be looking at the preferred plan, does include a citywide transportation plan, as we noted. And again, it's not very detailed. It doesn't give you how wide each street is going to be or anything like that, but it recommends new pedestrian bridges over the freeway, and it recommends a system of pedestrian and bicycle paths all throughout the city, and a network of transit streets, and pedestrian priority freudage streets, and, you know, it's a long-term vision. But I think if we can figure out how to implement that, that will go a long way towards addressing a lot of these issues. Which, by the way, the steering committee labored long and hard over.
Any other comments?
Very good job.
Yeah, it was a good job.
I appreciate your effort in there, Charlie.
Thank you.
And all the consultants.
I have one. Were any origin and destination studies done as part of this study? It seems to me that we're a city of only one square mile, and I would guess 90% of the trips people take are going outside the city. So to some extent, it seems to me all these traffic calming devices inside the city may not be of much help.
You're talking about for existing traffic?
Yeah.
Because what the generation was from, from the big four.
There's still a lot of traffic within the city, even if it's coming from outside or going to somewhere outside, it's still going through city streets.
I mean, there's Fortieth as well.
But here's the original report, and I didn't include all the graphics from it, but you may recall this drawing. This shows, it's not exactly origin, destination, but it shows Farr and Pierce' best guess as to what the trip gen, trip distribution, as it's called, is to and from Emeryville from all these various directions. Now, what this doesn't show is either trips that are entirely within Emeryville, or trips that are just passing through Emeryville on their way to and from somewhere else. But trips that have an origin or destination in Emeryville, this is their guess as to what the approximate breakdown of that is, as to where they're going. It's pretty even.
And what it shows is that the vast majority of trips are freeway-oriented, and what I'd like to see is how we figure out how to get people to Emeryville for their shopping work or whatever needs, and out of their cars immediately, you know, so that they're not driving through the city streets, not driving through our neighborhoods, not clogging everything, but some way to get people out of their cars once they get there.
Well, one thing I think is interesting, and again, there's, I mean, there's tons of data, you can really get bogged down in it, but the 2000 census, in their Journey to Work data, we've aggregated that information for Emeryville, and it shows, I don't remember the exact numbers, but I think typical, what's referred to as mode split, which is how many people use different modes of transportation, and this is only for commuting to work, it's not for any other trip purpose. You know, typically, you get about 80% of people driving alone in most places. In Emeryville, it's something like 50% of our residents, regardless of where they work, drive alone. And actually, quite a high percentage walk to work in Emeryville, live and work in Emeryville and walk to work. But only about 50% of our residents, regardless of where they may work, whether it's San Francisco or Berkeley or Oakland or somewhere else, 50% drive alone. But those who come into Emeryville to work from somewhere else, about 75% of those drive alone. So it's not our residents we have to convince, it's the people who come here from somewhere else that we have to convince, you know?
Is it the casual carpool thing?
Charlie, what do these percentages mean, like the 7%?
This is, these should add up to 100.
That means where people are going outside the city.
Yeah, 19%, for example, of all the trips that are going from Emeryville outside the city, 19% are going up I-80. 10% are going across the Bay Bridge.
But this doesn't show the difference between going outside and staying inside the city.
This doesn't show trips that are entirely within the city, no. Or it doesn't show all the tens of hundreds of thousands of cars a day that are on the freeway just passing through Emeryville.
My point is that if the bulk of the traffic is going from Emeryville to Berkeley or Oakland or someplace outside the city, then the amount that we can impact by doing a local traffic management study seems pretty limited.
Well...
Because you can't affect those.
Well, what you get is, if people are starting in Emeryville somewhere, either because they work here and they're going home, or they live here and they're going to work, at least while they're on Emeryville city streets, they would be limited, for example, to 25 miles per hour.
My point is that those people are not alternate non-car users. Those people have to, will only always want to use cars. Unless we can incorporate our transit study into a regional transit study...
Oh, you're talking about getting them to change mode.
Yeah. How do you get those people out of the cars when they go? When I first moved to Emeryville, for example, the 57 bus used to come down Powell Street, and that was terrific, because you can get on the bus and go anywhere in the city. Now you can't do that. We don't have the mobility of going outside the city except with a car. And so it seemed to me, any regional transit solution has to be regional.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
It seemed to me we'd spend more, we'd be better off to spend more time and money subsidizing AC Transit than building up a small, little transit system inside the city, because that's where people are going, they're going outside the city.
Well, I think it's, I don't think it's either-or.
Well, no, but it would be interesting to know what the percentage is.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, every time I get in my car, if I go someplace within Emeryville, I walk. I can walk even to Pack and Save from Watergate, that's not too bad. But every time I get in my car, I'm going somewhere other than Emeryville.
Yeah.
And that's most of the time.
Except when you're coming over here.
Except when I'm coming over here.
And then you carpool with buds.
Yeah, right, I did want to point out that recently, I was looking at, there's an AC Transit publication called Designing with Transit about having mixed use along transit corridors, and it looks at the whole AC system and the BART system in the inner Bay area and the East Bay. And almost the entire city of Emeryville is considered a transit corridor. So people do, they take the 72, they take the 57, they take the Emery Go-Round to BART. So we do have, we have connections, we just got to keep working on making them better. Better, more frequent, more efficient.
Well, I use Emery Go-Round all the time, and I think it's terrific, particularly now they have an express to Watergate.
I like your idea of putting gates on the...
And guards.
Okay. So I guess, I mean, in terms of passing along your comments to the city council, it sounds like it's basically, what I'm hearing is you would like Nelson Nygaard to take a closer look at each of the various intersections, and you'd like to know what the details of all those intersections is going to be, but you agree in concept with what we've presented?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
We'll work to do.
Okay. We obviously have more information coming, too. Fulton's working on different reports. Well, that concludes the study session items. We have commissioner comments. Any comments? Can we go home? No comments?
Chair Martin?
Yes.
I have a commissioner comment. Josh, what's his last name? Simon. Before he left, he wasn't here for public comment, or he would have spoken at that time, but he left with me a flyer for an event called The Faces of Emeryville, an arts community event, and that is happening this Saturday, not this Saturday, but Saturday, March 15th, 10:00 to noon. It looks like it's at several different venues. I guess there's some other things at other pla, I guess it looks like it's all over the city from 10:00 to 5:00. At the secondary school and the elementary school. And I would also note, there's a couple of other community events coming up on March 8th. There's a public community meeting about the pedestrian bicycle bridge between Bay Street and Novartis, and that will be at the middle school at 9:30 a.m., the middle school on 61st Street. Again, that's Saturday, March 8th. And on same day as this, on Saturday, March 15th, there is a community workshop here in the council chambers about the housing element, and that's from 10:00 to 12:00. And I believe there's also a workshop on, what's it called? Mortgage...
Mortgage foreclosure.
Mortgage foreclosure issues. Mortgage foreclosure issues.
That's on the 22nd.
Creditory lending. That is also on the 22nd, I think.
At the senior center, and I think it starts at 9:00 a.m.
Yeah. Thank you. All right. So I'll pass this flyer around, so you can look at it.
Thank you. Well, if there's no other comments, then we will adjourn the meeting at 9:49.